Good afternoon and welcome everybody to HBCSE, especially Professor Arvind Kumar, our guest of honor today and Professor Jaram Chengalur, Director TIFR, Dr. Anil Kakotkar, Format AEC Chairman, Professor Arunabhattacharya, Director HBCSE. And all our friends, it's lovely to see so many of our friends and colleagues and ex-colleagues. Of course, Arvind Kumar's name always brings in people, so no wonder. And so we will begin this special session of the Symposium on Physics Education, which is dedicated to the celebration of Professor Arvind Kumar's life and career on the occasion of his turning eighty, which he did about a month ago. And to start the proceedings, I would invite our Centre Director, Professor Arunabhattacharya, to come on stage and welcome the audience. Good afternoon. Wake up, wake up. It's a privilege to stand here and it's an absolute delight and honor to welcome you all to this wonderful event that we're going to have. It's a real, you know, pleasure that we can honor the legacy of Professor Arvind Kumar to building this institution, to his role in the development of HBCSE over the last fifty years in setting up what it is right now. It's also great, I'm delighted to see that there are so many colleagues, old and new, who have come together just in the lunch break when people were coming in. It's nice to see that, you know, an event like this provides the opportunity for people who otherwise have probably not met each other after the pandemic to really come here, get together. It feels really nice that we are catalyzing, this event is catalyzing, bringing together people. It's very difficult to describe the achievements and the legacy of Professor Arvind Kumar in a sentence, in brief. Anusha will be doing the honors in a bit. But, you know, a person whose knowledge of physics is absolutely impeccable, a passionate teacher, whose classes, you know, the old study circles for physics etcetera legendary. A person who led, whose visionary leadership of the centre, the architect of the Olympiad Programme for the country in the sciences, to have the foresight to set up NIUS, the Initiative for Undergraduate Science, which we realize today is so much more important than what we may have realized over all these years as the new education policy talks about universities having undergraduate educations, you know, integrated into them. So to have the foresight for that, I think it's amazing. And the combination of all of this, someone who managed very deftly all the difficulties of, you know, leading an institution with diplomacy, with tact, with whatever, and got things done is Professor Arvind Kumar AK. And I really refuse to believe that number eighty. Let me tell you why. I know his birthday was sometime, Anusha said, about a month back, but on the ninth of November, AK turned twenty-five years younger. And this I saw for myself. This is the day the NCRT called many of us to say that, okay, now, you know, the next generation of textbooks etcetera have to be written. We are going to have a meeting. And I never saw anybody so excited about this and so energetic as AK. You know, he decided, no, of course, we have to do this. This is such a great opportunity, I am going to be there. Somebody who's eighty? No, not at all. AK, you have many, many, many years of great productivity and success ahead of you. And today, let's join in celebrating that. It's a celebration, folks. You know, thoda se josh dikhao, smile, be happy and all the best. Over to you.
Thank you, Arunabh. I will now request Professor Jaram Chengalur and Professor Savita Ladke, Dean, HBCSE, to please come on stage and Professor Arvind Kumar, if you can come on stage for a few minutes, to greet Professor Arvind Kumar on this special occasion.
So this just says that with deep gratitude and appreciation for your pioneering and sustained contributions to science education and visionary leadership of the centre.
Okay, so of course, it's AK's birthday, not today, but a month ago. So there has to be some small gift, a very small token of our appreciation on behalf of HBCSE and to give that to AK, I will invite some of our colleagues who are presently working at HBCSE and also with whom AK shared a long time at HBCSE. So please come on stage. Sumana, Gajanan, Sandhya, Rasam. Please, do we have everybody, just a minute. Sorry, I'm just getting the list out. Yes, Mahesh Bamne, Andy Desmook, Shirish Patare, Anupama, Mina. Okay, is Pednaker here? No, Shenoi? Yeah. Shweta and Manoj, you have to come out of there. Lale? Yeah, so of course, I mean, AK, as you all know, that lives a very frugal life. He doesn't have many needs etcetera, but he loves to read books. So we thought it'd be a good idea to give him a couple of books. So please gather together, please. Thank you, thank you everybody. Yes, now we can go back. We'll call you again, don't worry, we'll call you again. Okay, so we'll start with a few things now and we will take a break at around four o'clock because I expect this session to be long because there are many people who have expressed a desire to speak on this occasion. So we will take a short tea break for about twenty minutes at around four o'clock. But before that, Prithvi, if you can come on stage. Yeah, so I must mention that we have some friends and colleagues, ex-colleagues of AK who are joining online, so we are on Zoom as well. So it might take a few minutes' time every time to adjust these things. Yeah, can you hide it please or it's okay? Yeah, thank you. Okay, so as, oops, as, as Arunabh said, that it is very difficult to describe AK's contribution to this centre, to TIFR, the larger institute and to the country in general in a brief manner. Nevertheless, I will give it a try and I will just take you through some of the most important aspects of his life and career. I don't know, I'm sure I will not be able to do justice because I, I mean, there are many others in the audience who have known him for much, much longer, but still, let's give it a try. So yeah, so I titled this, "Arvind Kumar: A Celebration of Life and a Life to Celebrate", because I think, looking at his life, you can see how he really gets or takes the best of life and that's his motto. He is always, I mean, alive and doing something and that's, that's the celebration of life. Okay? Yeah, I'm trying this, yeah. Okay, so Arvind Kumar was born on fifteenth October nineteen forty-three in Delhi and he did his initial school education in a vernacular school in Hindi medium in old Delhi. He won the then prestigious All-India Entrance Scholarship in nineteen sixty for college education and went on to do his BSc Honors in Physics in nineteen sixty-three from Hans Raj College, Delhi University. And he joined the Atomic Energy Establishment, as it was called at that time, Training School nineteen sixty-three to nineteen sixty-four as a physics trainee. And later, one year later, joined the Theory Group at TIFR. This picture is kindly provided by Kravinod Sani and even he doesn't know exactly when it was taken. I asked AK, even he doesn't remember, but it must be somewhere in the nineteen sixties when he was just a young student. Yeah, you still have it, yes. Maybe we can have the lights off here, please. So he completed his PhD in TIFR from TIFR in nineteen sixty-nine in Theoretical Particle Physics. His guide was Professor Virandran Singh, who later became the Director of TIFR. And he acknowledges that his overall mentor was Professor BM Udgaokar, who was then the head of the Theory Group and who later played a pivotal role in the founding of HBCSE. And then after his PhD, he went on to do his postdoctoral work at CERN Geneva from nineteen sixty-nine to nineteen seventy and then the University of London, Westfield College, for two years more, nineteen seventy to seventy-one. So this picture, it's taken in nineteen sixty-seven, must be during his PhD years. I'll just enlarge the picture and I don't know whether you can spot AK here, but he is here, third, this is AK. This picture has been kindly provided by Oyendila Rai Choudhury from TIFR Archives. There is one more person in this room who is in this picture. I don't know whether he remembers. This is Professor Abbas Rongwal. These I know because these are in the caption of the picture. And this is Yachirin Ambu and this is BM Udgaokar, among many other people. Okay, let's go ahead. So during his postdoc period at Westfield College, he gave a short lecture course on a topic in particle theory, the Iconal Approximation. And this, he says, was a turning point because this is the first time that he had an experience of teaching and he decided on a career involving teaching theoretical physics. So this was one turning point in his life. And this picture is taken in Europe, as you can easily imagine. We usually don't imagine AK like this leaning against a car and all that. So this is a very interesting picture. And this is of course his wife and he was newly married at that time. And then he came back to India and from nineteen seventy-one to nineteen eighty-three, he was at Mumbai University, at that time, I think it was called University of Mumbai and University Department of Physics, or UDP, as they call it. And there, he taught nearly every, every core course in theoretical physics, MSC Physics and several domains beyond his specialization of particle physics. And as you shall see, that this has been the hallmark of AK's career, the breadth of, of things that he has done. And he, during this time, he also supervised two students in PhD in two unrelated areas. One is Quantum Black Hole Physics, we are all familiar with the name, Professor Bala Ayar, who has also joined online and I'm sure he's listening to this. And another one on atomic and optical physics, the student was Dr. Marina Disouza, who is presently in the US. And during this time, he wrote many teaching materials for the BSc level. And if you look at his publication record, you realize that he wrote numerous expository science articles in IAPT Bulletin and Science Today, including the Einstein Centenary Year in nineteen seventy-nine, a commemorative article on that occasion. He also devised a thirty-minute radio programme for All-India Radio, called "A Grain of Sand" in nineteen eighty-one. And he regards this period, the UDP period, as foundational to his later academic career. And many things started from here, as we shall see. And he came to HBCSE in nineteen eighty-four, that was the HBCSE old campus. And he started this Homi Baba Study Circle in Physics, which ran for a staggering, here you can see fourteen years and later again, he did it for two years, so for sixteen years, without break, every, every Saturday, right? Every Sunday? Thursday, Thursday and Sundays, yes. So many of you have attended that and without fail, this ran for so many years. And he taught everything in the undergraduate and postgraduate level. And these were weekly sessions for BSc students and in this, he was assisted by Professor HC Pradhan, who is also there, and Professor Shris Barve, he was also due to come. I don't know whether he is, oh yes, okay. So they were assisting him. And this time, he started PhD supervision in a new area. This was perhaps the, his first foray into educational research on mathematical modeling of educational processes by Manjusha Deshpande. She is also perhaps in the audience, she was due to come. And now, one very important thing that, that happened during this time is that NCRT Class eleven and twelve Physics Textbooks were written. And Professor Arvind Kumar was a key member of the team that wrote. There are others also, Professor Radhaam Nitananda is here. But, and especially for the teachers who use these NCRT textbooks. So these are of course the first, the older edition, but in the later editions, much of it has remained the same with some reorientation and some, some editing, but the core part has remained the same. And AK's biggest contribution to this, perhaps apart from writing, was that he devised about thousand new exercises. All the exercises in the NCRT Class eleven, twelve textbooks were written by, were devised, almost all of them were devised by Professor Arvind Kumar and we are still using them. And this is perhaps very little known and I asked you people a few days ago, some people that you know, who, we were discussing about the NCRT problems and we asked that you know who devised them? And I told you that I will tell you two days later. So this is a novel feature which has survived all the later editions. Even in today's editions, these problems are there. He devised another thirty-minute radio programme for AIR called "Complements to Complementarity" on Neils Bohr during this time. And he says that all this in a sense was based on his earlier teaching experience at the university. And then from that point onwards, from nineteen eighty-four onwards, when he came here, he was totally immersed in HBCSE's work, of which equity was a primary pillar. And he engaged deeply in the field visits to rural areas along with Vijay Kulkanthi, who was at that time the Director of HBCSE, Professor Pradhan, Professor Agarkar, Professor Gambhir and many other colleagues. This is perhaps, so again, all these pictures, we really don't have the exact dates or the exact context always, so it looks like from that period. And he had many field visits in the programme led by Professor SC Agarkar. And he says that this removed his misconception that he had, the school science education is just a dilute version of higher science education. He realized that it is a whole new ballgame and it has to be treated differently. And during this time, he also got involved in the remedial secondary mathematics parts, one to four with Agarkar and RM Bhagwat and HC Pradhan. And he also wrote materials in Marathi, based on his intuition and experience at that time. And he was a resource person in numerous nurture and orientation programmes throughout. So I mean, throughout his career, he has been doing teaching and writing all the time and in multiple languages. In research and development activities during his HBCSE years, from nineteen ninety-two to two thousand eight, this started a little before coming to HBCSE. So he turned to the professional field of physics education research, which he is still involved in. And one of the earlier works was his PR work on student conceptions in Galilean Relativity with Jaishree Ramdas and Shris Barve. And he also wrote co-curricular materials in physics at the beginning college level with Shris Barve. Many of you are familiar with the books, "How and Why in Physics", the three volumes, wonderful books, if you have not seen them. And he extended his intellectual interest at this time. And coming from a core physics background, he went on to give courses for PhD students and others at HBCSE on learning theories, great educationist, cognitive development and later philosophy of science. So he shifted gears very quickly. And then he became Centre Director in nineteen ninety-four and he retired as Centre Director in two thousand eight, a fourteen-year tenure during which many things happened at HBCSE. I'll not have time to go through the details of all. I'll just mention some of the major initiatives that he took upon himself and in which he was assisted by his numerous colleagues who took leading roles at HBCSE. Among them, the Foundation Curriculum, along with Professor Chitra Natraj and Sugra Chunnawala. The Homi Baba Curriculum in Primary Science with Jaishree Ramdas and Josna Vijapurkar. The Homi Baba Curriculum in Primary Mathematics Led by K. Subramaniam. The Collaborative Programme with Atomic Energy Educational Society. Then the Tribal Education Project Led by Professor SC Agarkar and who is here in this picture, for those of you, and this is Professor Gambhir. Here we have, I hope you recognize, Professor Mayank Vaya, who is here in the audience, looks very different now. And this is Pranav Fadnavisha, our previous administrative officer. And also the Portable Science and Mathematics Laboratory along with Vijay Gambhir, K. Subramaniam and Shweta Naik. He also was one of the main persons behind this History of Science exhibition, which is a wonderful exhibition on history of science. Temporarily is undergoing renovation and will be reinstalled. It is edited by G. Nagarjun and Professor Arvind Kumar. And this is, this is how the exhibition looked at this time. This is Professor Arun Grover Sudamutti, having a look at it. And the other important exhibition which was created at that time was the Gender and Science Exhibition by Sugra Chunnawala, which is in one of the adjoining rooms here. So this is Professor Shobha Bhattacharya inaugurating that here. And also, the Biennial International Conference on STEM Research, called EPSTEMI, was started during his time. I don't know whether this is a picture from EPSTEMI, but this is, many of his colleagues, some of, all of whom are almost present here in the audience today. So one of the major things during his tenure at, at HBCSE, which changed to a great deal the nature of work done at HBCSE and also put HBCSE very much in the public eye, was the Olympiad Programme, which, which is a very big programme and which, as you know, still continues today with great success. And Professor Vijay Singh talked about the origins of the Olympiad Programme in his talk earlier today. And so this started from nineteen ninety-seven, the Science Olympiad Programme with international participation in the Physics Olympiad in nineteen ninety-eight. And quickly, in nineteen ninety, from nineteen ninety-nine, we started participating in the Chemistry Olympiad, from two thousand in the Biology Olympiad. The Astronomy Olympiad also started in, we participated in nineteen ninety-nine and later, the Junior Science Olympiad also, we participated from two thousand seven. And HBCSE was made the nodal centre of the country in mathematics and sciences. So this put HBCSE on a very important national role. And we also hosted the International Olympiads in Chemistry, Astronomy and Biology during his tenure. So these are some pictures from ICH, the Chemistry Olympiad. This is from IBO, I think the previous year where he is receiving the IBO, whatever it is which has to be carried. This is the IBO team, the previous, this is the IAO two thousand six. The other major programme that he initiated at HBCSE is the National Initiative on Undergraduate Science, NIUS, from two thousand four. And this, I think it would be fair to say that it was almost completely AK's brainchild. He conceived of it, he wrote the entire proposal and got it through DEE approval and all that. Of course, he was helped by, by other colleagues, but this originated from him. And this extended HBCSE's domain of work from school education or high school education into undergraduate education. And this was again, a game-changing affair because it also gave us two new buildings, which we are still using, including a very big hostel where many of you are staying. And without these, many of HBCSE's programmes that are being held today would have been impossible. And so that was again, a very big contribution. Yeah, here also there are, I think, Professor Satyamutti, who has joined online, I think he is here and some others are also here. So what happened was that these major programmes elevated institutional status of HBCSE within TIFR and outside. And from a constituent unit of TIFR, HBCSE became a national centre of TIFR at par with other national centres of TIFR in terms of the institutional structure. And when a separate, when TIFR became a deemed university, at that time, a separate subject board on science education was formed. And so all this had, was, was led by, happened under Professor Arvind Kumar's leadership and he had a key role to play in this. Of course, most of you know, but for the others, this is Professor SS Jha, the then Director of TIFR. And also during this time, the substantial upgradeation of HBCSE infrastructure and four new buildings were added. The two hostels, what we today call the, the old hostel, at that time, it was called the Olympiad Hostel and then the NIUS Hostel and the two office buildings, the Olympiad and the NIUS. So this allowed HBCSE to grow in many directions with new labs and other facilities. So this was a huge contribution. And on the national scale, HBCSE came to be regarded as a premier place in the country for R&amp;D and orientation activity in science education at school and colleges. And he also, in recognition of his contributions to all, to all these efforts, he was also the author or the co-author of several national reports, very important national reports related to science education. He was a member of the National Steering Committee for the National Curriculum Framework two thousand five and he chaired the focus group on, on teaching science. Yeah, so this is, I think, then Education Minister, Murli Munahad Joshi, visiting HBCSE. This is Dr. Chidambaram, the EEC Chairman, Professor Jha here. And this is JJ Bhava, who was the Chair of the TIFR Council that time. So now AK retired as HBCSE Director in two thousand eight. But his retirement, if anything, just increased his activities mainly into, because he is now free from administration. So he plunged absolutely, I mean, with full force into academics again. And he, which was all the time alive, as you saw, he did a lot of academic work even as Director, but now he had even more time. And he played a key academic role in the initial phase of EMDA ECBS. Mumbai in the setting up of that, Ameya and Sangita are here, they know all this history. And Naisar Bhuvaneswar. So the first entrance test, the Nest, and then the curriculum development, AK had a very, very significant contribution in those. And he started teaching regularly at CBS, of course, for many years, from two thousand eight to two thousand twenty, he taught several courses at CBS. And of course, he remained involved and engaged with the research activities in physics education at HBCSE, which continues till date. And among the major works after retirement, he had a student, Atanu Bandrapathai, who completed a very nice PhD on cognitive studies in relativity. And this was perhaps the first detailed study in the world on student pitfalls in the basic themes of general relativity. This was done in two thousand eleven. Along with Professor Savita Ladke, he wrote a book on Chemical Thermo-Dynamics, which is available on our website, a very nice book, especially for teachers who are present here, you can consult this book. And currently, he is also involved in PR, in content-specific epistemology of physics and his disciplinary practices, along with Mashud and myself. So if you look at his career and his range of work, the first thing you notice is that the wide range of research, from physics to PR. So in his initial papers during his student and postdoc days were in quantum field theory and black holes and things like that. During these, at the nineteen seventies, in the eighties and the nineties. And you can see after coming to HBCSE and so he is writing in Galilean Relativity, Frames of Reference, etcetera, Alternative Conceptions, this is with Jaishree Ramdas. And at the same time, parallely doing core physics also, this is with Vikram Atle. And then more and more into physics education research. So he covered a wide range of, of research in his entire career. This is also evident in his writings, from the school to the UG level. In every level, he has written books and in multiple languages. He has written in English, he has written in Hindi, he has written in Marathi. So that's again, a very wide range. And various kinds of books and various topics, from basic textbooks to how and why, to fractals and whatnot. and whatnot. He has received many awards and recognitions, among them, the Indian Nuclear Society's Science Communication Award in 2003, the Godavari Gora Award in the category of Ghan from Kusum Magraj, Pratisthan, Maharashtra in 2006, the TOAS Regional Prize in School Curriculum and Materials Development, the National Award for Science Popularization among children by the National Council for Science and Technology Communication of the Government of India. This was an award for HBCSE, which happened under his directorship in 1999. He is a fellow of the National Academy of Sciences. And he also received the INSAT Teacher Award in 2014. And the Government of India felicitated him with the Padmashri Award in 2010 for his contributions to science education. So, I'll just finish with some pictures. So, this is a picture, I think, where, I mean, so from the left, I mean, many of our past HBCSE colleagues are here and even, I think, yeah. So, I'll not name all of them, but this is, I think, Mr. Rahul, this is Professor Jha, this is Professor Chitre, Professor Narlikar. And this person, I'm sorry, I can't really recognize, this is V. G. Kulkarni. And this is Kadham, I think, our previous driver and others, I, no, sorry, this is Joshi and this is Kadham, anyway. And this is, of course, Arvind Kumar, if you don't recognize him, he looked a bit different at that time. And, and this is Mr. Korgaokar, this is Mr. Mastaka. And this is again, against some of the people in the audience, Professor Radha Ram Nitananda is here, Professor Swapan Ghosh is here, Abba Srungwala, and Mukunda, they are all here in this refresher course on quantum mechanics in 2014. Some more pictures, this is Professor Villendra Singh, who was the director of TIFR and also AK's PhD guide. This is J. J. Bhava, the then-chair of the TIFR council, AK, and this is Professor V. G. Kulkarni. This is Yaspal, of course, this is Yaspal, Shobha Bhattacharya and Musaansid Barma, who were the directors of TIFR. Yeah, this slide I wanted to show you because this is, of course, JV Narlikar. And here, you can't read it, but there are two letters, this first one coming from, so Narlikar was that time the director of Ayuka, and he is writing to AK. Under official letter, it's one director writing to another, usually this is about some official matters or some administrative matters. But he is asking a question, he is saying that, he has, he is looking the answer to the question, why is the color of tire black? That's the question that is put in this letter. And here AK is replying again to Narlikar with his explanation, which he acknowledges Professor Chitra Nath Rajan, who has given this. And AK, of course, in his usual style says, I will read it out, he says that, "I am aware that the answer does not go into the basic organic or structural chemistry of why or how the carbon black does of what is, what it is known to do empirically. I have meanwhile consulted some organic chemistry friends of mine for this kind of explanation and would pass it on to you if I get one." So, very unusual exchange between two directors, but those were the ages, I don't know whether today's directors also exchange such things on official letters. So, anyway, so, so this is, again, I mean, this is, of course, Professor B. M. Gaukhar, who was one of the key persons behind HBCSE. Dr. Kakotkar is here. Here, of course, Professor Rangwala. And here, some of his colleagues, I think Professor Sudhir Panse is here and others who were there in some conference, I believe. Yeah, some more pictures of him teaching or giving lectures. This is of, in, with HBCSE colleagues. I'm sure I don't have to identify these people for HBCSE friends, so these are various friends. Again, very unusual picture of AK. This is, I think, in some conference, in some party, huh? Epistomy Goa, yeah. So, Goa, Goa brings you different, I mean, brings out different personalities, right? So, so you can see also AK dancing or at least supporting the dance. Yeah, this, I think, is the transition of the directorship from AK to HCP, in the director's office, surrounded by many colleagues from HBCSE. And, yeah, so here again, Manoj, who is behind there, Shanoi, and then here is Gajanan, here is Meena, Sumana, Smita, and Sandhya. Yeah, some old pictures. Yeah, so, if we look at AK's whole career, I think, what strikes me most is the depth and the breadth of his work. In research, he has gone from core physics to physics education research, I mean, various and within core physics also a breadth of ideas. He has been teaching continuously, nearly 50 years of teaching experience at the university, at CBS and at various countless programs at HBCSE. The Homi Baba Study Circle, which has benefited countless students in Bombay and around, and it ran it for 17 years. And he has taught in diverse settings, is not just in institutional settings, he has gone to rural areas, he has gone to semi-urban areas and given many lectures. And he has been writing prolifically, he has, he has written so many research papers, he has written pedagogic articles and books, popular science books, et cetera. And of course, perhaps the most, one of the most important things is the institution building and the national impact that he has, he has left in, in the whole scene. So, he has a transformative leadership of HBCSE for 14 years, which brought in so many new things to HBCSE and made HBCSE what it is today. He had a big contribution to that. And he helped set up the graduate school in science education, then the Olympiads and the NIUS, I've already talked about, the authorship of the NCRT physics textbook, which has a very big national impact. So many students have benefited from, from these textbooks. And of course, the contributions to KVPOIC, CBS and NISA since inception. So, so that's what I just tried to summarize his work in a few slides, so it's, one can go on and on. But I will stop here and let others do the talking. Before that, thanks for the pictures which came from these people. And so, again, I mean, I would end with this thing that he is a celebration of life and it's indeed a life to celebrate. So, before I call on the others, I will just, yeah. So, I will just, so, the others have four minutes, I will not take four minutes, but I will, I will take a few minutes because I am perhaps one of the people in this room who has the least overlap or, or, or overlap with AK or working experience, but because I was, actually, what I found out recently was that I was the last permanent member that was recruited under his directorship. So, so I officially have the, have the least amount of overlap officially with you. But I have been working with him since then, after his retirement. And right now, we work very closely together for several years. And I'm sure the others will paint a much better picture than I can. But I will just say one or two things that strikes me whenever we talk, I have my interactions with AK. The first thing that comes across is the extreme dedication to anything that he does, anything. And that can be, I mean, writing a paper, that can be just writing some two few lines or something. He doesn't like procrastination and that's one of the things where we have great differences. And, but, but AK is something, so he will send, okay, I will send you. And by the time I reach from here to my home at TIFR, it has come, he has already finished it. And this kind of dedication and when he starts, you can see that the wide range of things he has done. So, obviously, he is, I mean, doing a lot of things. But one thing that I noticed, he is that, he doesn't do too many things at the same time. He just starts one thing and he finishes it. And he works tirelessly behind it all the time till it is finished. And once that is done, he immediately jumps to the next one and finishes that. And that's his working style. And, and he says that also, now I will completely, I will not look at anything else, I will just do that. And doing this means, so, his usual, sorry, this is a little personal, but if I may share, so, he will send you a WhatsApp message at 1:45 in the night because he is still working. So, his working hours are, I think, typically from 11 o'clock in the morning till 2 o'clock in the night. And I've tried to advise him time and again that perhaps this is not so good at your age. But he says, "No, no, I have busted that myth, that early to bed, early to rise makes a man healthy, wealthy, and wise." So, and I, and one can see it, of course, in practice. So, so he is a tireless worker, that's the first thing that, that comes across. I mean, any work, he will just work tirelessly till it's finished and he doesn't wait for the others to contribute or anything. The other thing is the self-effacing nature. Although he does so much work, he never puts himself in front. During the Physics Olympiad that we hosted here, we requested him to be in the academic committee, if possible, to chair it, and he declined. But he said, "But I, whatever physics feedback you want, I will give you, you just bring the questions to me and I will give you feedback. But on one condition only, you cannot put my name anywhere. You, nobody must know and I, I don't want my name anywhere. But I will give you the feedback" and that's exactly what he did. He gave very detailed feedback on all the questions that we showed him. So, that's the kind of work that he, that he does. And the other thing that I will like to say is, he is extremely persuasive. So, if you have an argument with AK about anything, you are sure from the beginning that you will finally lose it. Because, because you say something and he says something and you get the feeling that you are winning this argument. And at some point, AK, out of the hat, will say something so incontrovertible that the argument cannot go any further. And, and this, we have seen him in his capacity as director also, and even now in various arguments on politics, on sports, on anything. He will somehow find some argument that will, that will win the argument. He is very persuasive and the, and of course, in all that I said, it must have been clear that he knows how to take people along and to work with so many different people. I mean, from many esteemed colleagues who are sitting here, to down to much younger people like me and who have very different working styles than him, sorry for that, but, but, but he doesn't, he manages to work with everybody, that's what I have, I have found out, that there's nobody who cannot work with AK. I mean, they, he, he has that capacity to take people along. So, thank you AK for everything and for the guidance and the mentorship that you have given all of us and especially to me personally. And wish you a very happy, healthy, and productive life. Thank you. So, now, what we'll do is that there are many people here who would like to say things about Professor Arvind Kumar. So, I will, I have a list and there are many people already on the list. And then I have a second list of people who have said that if possible, I also want to say something. So, we'll see. So, one request that I have is that because there are at least 30 people to speak, so I'll request every speaker to limit your contribution to less than four minutes because that's already two hours, not counting the transition and the breaks. So, so first, I would like to invite on stage Dr. Anil Kakotkar, who has been, of course, AK's batchmate from the training school, if I am not wrong, and a long-term colleague,
Well, first of all, Dr. Arvind Kumar compliments. And let's say that although it is not your official birthday today, but many happy returns of the day. There are many things we share together, but one thing which I had not recognized or realized so far is that we also share the initials which are so common. Because I am used to imagining if somebody writes AK, it is me. So, today is another reality dawned on me. But you are right, we are batchmates. But if I had to recount the list of things we share, he, of course, as the biodata said, he studied in Delhi, I studied in Madhya Pradesh, but both we studied outside Maharashtra. Dr. Arvind Kumar, we worked particularly when he was the center director here. There are plenty of occasions to talk, this program which he initiated, call it NIUS, later even the CBS. And more importantly, when it came to devising the national entrance test for admissions, both at NISA as well as CBS. We are all very singularly dependent on Dr. Arvind Kumar and the Homi Baba Center. Dr. Pradhana also is, is here. So, there are many things, I can go on, but I would save a few minutes out of the four minutes limit that you have put. But I have come here only to express my gratitude, express respects to a dear friend, and wish him all the well in years to come.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Kakotkar. Yeah, sorry about the time limit, but yeah, you'd finish much less than four minutes, but yeah. So, so we have several people on online, are those people already there or, or we'll, okay, we'll come back to that.
So, Professor Arvind Kumar entered my frame of reference through the black hole work that you had about, through my colleague, Bala Ayer. You will hear from Bala separately, so I just want to say, it's a little vicarious excitement for us. It's a bit like seeing Rohit Sharma hit a six, you didn't hit it, but you feel somehow that, "Apna aad me nahi kya hai." Anyway. Then, of course, the next thing I heard is that he had moved into science education. Of course, you've seen the whole trajectory. So, I had a theory about it, that, of course, you know, he was obviously doing very well in this area, but from what I know, maybe the kind of things that we do did not satisfy his philosophical intonations and also urged to be useful, practically. And I think he's found a calling in which both these have been amply fulfilled. So, our real overlap was in this NCRT textbook that you heard about, the early, early work in the late 80s, early 90s. So, I'll let you behind the scenes here. I think Professor V. G. Bidhe, if I'm not mistaken, decided to assemble a team. I think of the team as having N minus one very eminent physicists. Some of them were from Bangalore, so they roped me in also. So, that became N. And then to keep them all in check, to ground them, or ground this high voltage group, Professor Arvind Kumar was there. So, we debated everything, but he became our critic, our conscience, in spite of which, of course, you know, such a group will head in many directions. Anyway, the book was put together, we had a lot of feedback from teachers. I have to say, it had mixed reviews. I, I did go to the house of one of my TIFR colleagues and he very proudly introduced me to his doctor, saying, "He wrote the wave optics chapter," and she didn't talk to me after that. But the one thing which has got fantastic reviews, and we heard about that, is the problem set. And, and the reason is, he, you know, each of us thought we will devise problems for our own chapter. And somewhere at some point, we realized that it's all been done, okay? So, that's as far as the textbook was concerned. And of course, we again were together in the later edition, in the first edition, I think we were the babies of the team and then in the later edition, we were the sort of grace in the people in the team, but never mind. Lots of further overlap. As my T-shirt tells you, I joined TIFR, the nuclear family, if you like. And then, you know, NCR had been just around the corner, I, I found, someone said he's very persuasive, found myself being sucked into things like Olympiad program. So, let me, let me just cut it short here and say, "Arvind, thanks so much for everything that I've learned from you. I mean, the rigor with which you have approached teaching and anything, setting a question paper and so on. And thanks also for sort of sucking me into this very vibrant community and I've learned a lot from all of them."
Thank you, Professor Nitananda. And now we'll have someone who has joined online, Professor Bala Ayer, who was AK's PhD student. So, just give us.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes. Dear Arvind, I thank the organizers for the kind invitation to be part of the celebration of your wonderful and long career. Wish I could be there in person to recall these memories and convey warm regards to you from me and Suman on your 80th birthday. Thank you for your insights in physics, molding our values towards it, and for being a role model of academic integrity, so deceptively simple yet so challenging to emulate. I did my MSc in UDP during '74 to '76. I still recall the pleasure and NDLI treatment experience from your lectures on Bit Educate or Sunday lectures on mathematical physics from Genary or nuclear physics from Deshalit and Freshback. I worked with Arvind Kumar for my PhD during '76 to '79 on issues of Dirac field theory in current general spacetime. How did it all begin? My personal interaction with AK... My personal interaction with AK began during MSc Part II when AK fellow student Roy and I jointly read through Derek Louden's book on tensor calculus and general relativity. Sometime later, AK mentioned he would be willing to take me as a PhD student if I was interested. AK's research career was earlier in particle physics and I was his first PhD student at UDP, interested in general relativity. He then took me to the library and we browsed through physics reports. He picked two of them, one on solitons by Raja Ramam and another on quantum field theory in curved spacetime by Bryce David. We went over both of them and while reading through the literature cited in the latter, found a paper in Physic of B by Larry Ford on quantization of the scalar field in the curved background. Arvind then turned to me and posed, "What would happen if you had a Dirac equation in such a background?" And investigating this became my baby step into research. In its treatment, I found we used synonymous every technique that AK had taught us in his different courses. Though we had a protective treatment, the full problem could not be solved since it required the separability of Dirac equation in the curved background. We were not up to it. However, there was a twist in the tale. After completion of this work, Arvind was invited to TIFR to talk about this and at the end of the talk, LK Pandit told us that in the proceedings of Royal Society on Display, Chandrasekhar had separated the Dirac equation in the curved background. We were excited but realized that the separation was done using the Newman-Pendros formalism that we were not familiar with. To bridge the gap, we worked through Weinberg's book on general relativity and it took us almost a year to translate the Newman-Pendros treatment to the standard Dirac form and use it in my thesis. This simple quantum mechanical problem led to issues related to super radiance and Hawking radiation for curved black holes. In Chandrasekhar's book on mathematical theory of black holes, it came out during my PhD and it was memorable to find a minor reference to the paper by me and Arvind in that magnum opus. AK was so versatile that as has been mentioned, that after me, he guided Marina on a very different area related to two photon states and later on moved to research in physics pedagogy. Arvind used to have his celebrated weekend physics study circle for undergrad and it was the role model for my involvement in the REAP activity in the Bangalore Planetary Room over the weekends. From watching Arvind in action, whether in teaching, as editor of the Cosset Bulletin, introducing atomic structure of matter by a series of queries, discussing Herman Hesse's glass bead game, devising problems for the NCRT textbook or laying the roadmap for participation in science Olympiads, I am glad that if anything is worth doing, it is worth doing well and importantly, in time and would always require giving up some other thing that you were involved in. Thanks again, Arvind, with fond memories and warm regards and best wishes for good health and active intellectual life in the coming years. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Professor Bala Ayar. We will move on to the next speaker, Professor HC Pradhan, who was central director after Professor Arvind Kumar.
Patmeshri, Professor Arvind Kumar and members of this august audience who have assembled here out of love, admiration and respect for him. First of all, my apologies that I had to read my speech thanks to my not being well I consider myself extremely privileged, unfortunate that in my life, I met and been a friend, colleague or associate with many stalwarts of science in India. One foremost such person is Professor Arvind Kumar. I met Professor Arvind Kumar, AK as we normally used to refer to him, for the first time in nineteen seventy-five at the University Department of Physics where he was a member of the staff and I was a visiting teacher. AK was known to be the best physics teacher in the university with thorough mastery over core physics subjects and our acquaintance soon developed into friendship. I had returned from abroad with a doctorate in theoretical nuclear physics, had three years of postdoctoral research experience and joined RIA in RIA College in Mumbai because of a strong desire to teach undergraduate physics back at home. In nineteen eighty, I moved to Western Regional Instrumentation Centre at the University Mumbai WRIC. However, neither RIA College nor WRIC provided the environment that I was looking for and in October nineteen eighty-eight, I switched over to Homi Bhabha Center for Science Education, which was the place I was in search of. From there, I never moved anywhere else until my retirement in June two thousand eleven. AK also had meanwhile left UDP, joined HBCSE in nineteen eighty-four and started the famous Homi Bhabha Study Circle for Physics Undergraduate Students, a novel and unique experiment in student talent nurture. I found the study circle active and therefore used to participate and help in some of its sessions. Since I joined HBCSE in nineteen eighty-eight, AK and I became colleagues. The then and also the founder-director of Homi Bhabha Center for Suvijy Kulkarini, whose name has been given to this auditorium, already knew me for many years and he had been after me for joining HBCSE. The clinching reason however for me to do so was undoubtedly the presence of Professor Arvind Kumar at the center at that time. Professor Arvind Kumar's teaching prowess always amazed me. His subject knowledge was deep and thorough. His explanations were always clear, perspicacious and yet lucid. He never uses, in fact, never needs gimmicks to be in good books of students. His arguments are always strong, non-trivial and at times serious, yet students always gravitate toward him. They value his teaching. They attained his classes not so much to enjoy the classes but to learn the subject. After his retirement from HBCC, AK taught almost for a decade various core and advanced physics courses at the integrated MSc program of the UM, University of Mumbai and DA collaboration Center for Excellence in Basic Sciences. At this institution too, he was the most sought-after teacher. Professor AK is a first-rate intellectual. That is why he could easily and effectively make transitions from physics to physics education and from there to cognitive science. Because of his immense teaching experience, his work on students' understanding and their alternative conceptions covered a wide array of physics topics. With the help of one bright student, he impressively handled even students' misconceptions in learning general relativity. Unfortunately, his important work was not appreciated even at HBCSE. His analytical reasoning went beyond teaching and research and extended to decision and policymaking. In my opinion, it was AK who established in India, science education as a serious discipline. Until he took up the position of central director of HBCSE, the general impression even at TIFR was that science education was more of education than science and was not a strong academic discipline. With the emphasis on the subject, contained knowledge that Professor Arvind Kumar introduced, things gradually changed, culminating in the recognition of science education as a faculty in the TIFR deemed university. Otherwise, HBCC, I would fear, have remained a good science education NGO but not grown qualitatively. Excellence was now added to equity as HBCSE's goal. In a sense, HBCSE became a model science education institute for the country, a model affiliated, often a model affiliate of an outstanding research institution like TIFR. Excellence-oriented programs like Olympia Training and NIUS naturally evolved from this transition. This model should have been repeated at several other places in the country. Unfortunately, this has not been the case. This could be worth considering for the National Education Policy twenty twenty when it is being implemented. I was a witness to the HBCSE transition and I am happy that I could contribute to it whatever way I could. I was a member of the HBCSE management committee first and then board later since nineteen ninety-two and attending the board meetings during the transition period used to be a wonderful, memorable educating experience. I must record here that this desirable change in HBCSE would not have become possible if HBCSE did not have unresolved support from its parent organization, TIFR. TIFR, which is truly a liberal, intellectually strong and honest organization. AK's teaching prowess is reflected also in his books and textbook writing. His book series, How and Why in Physics, which he wrote in collaboration with Dr. Shriish Parvee is outstanding and every physics undergraduate student should study it. AK excels in preparing questions and exercises. He single-handedly developed the totality of chapter-end exercises of higher secondary standard eleven standard twelve physics textbooks for the NCRT published in the late nineties. The quality of these exercises is hardly matched by other higher secondary level physics textbooks in India and perhaps elsewhere in the world too. He contributed significantly to the National Education Framework two thousand five brought out by NCRT, especially to its part on science education. His thoughts on what science is and how it should be taught are so readable and are a guide to all science teachers. They come from his deep study and understanding of history and philosophy of science. Another striking feature of AK's personality is that he attracts, and what which attracts me in particular, is that he is a scientist to the core. You will never be able to find a non-scientific or a pseudo-scientific argument in his discourse. Neither does he tolerate any such arguments. He enjoys to work in a workshop mode, group working in a cyclic pattern, planning, writing, checking, discussing, reviewing and rewriting. I immensely enjoyed working with him in this mode for a series of four books on remedial mathematics at the secondary school level. Much of the work on the considerably acclaimed science exhibition, History of Science and Gender of Science that HBCC had developed, was also carried out in this manner. To sum up, what HBCSE is today is because of AK. I repeat that I consider myself fortunate that I happen to be AK's colleague. To me, he has been a friend, philosopher, guide and a guru. I am also lucky that despite serious health issues, I could be here to greet him on the day of his felicitation on completing eighty years and to express my gratitude to him. May he have many more years of life, happy, healthy and as fulfilling as ever. Thank you all.
Thank you, Professor Pradhan. I would like to invite Professor Vinod Sani next.
Are you able to hear me or...
Yeah, maybe you are too...
Okay, I can speak in this. So, many, many happy returns of the day though belatedly because today is your official birthday. Arvind's real birthday is fifteenth of October. I happened to be talking to my son and when I mentioned to him that I am going to attend this event, he said, "Convey best wishes even on my behalf." And I'll tell you why. That is because Sobal used to study in the junior college and some of the enrichment programs you supported, thanks to Dr. Kakotkar and I, we were on the governing council of education society. And of course, Arvind doesn't need any excuse. Physics education epitomizes Arvind's life. So, to tell you the truth, this little booklet which has been compiled, I thought does justice to that because it says Symposium for Physics Education at AK eighty. My mind goes back, actually the first time I met Arvind was back in July of nineteen sixty-one. I doubt whether there is anybody who has an older association than mine. And it so happened, Anvesh mentioned this, that Arvind was one of the recipients of All-India Entrance Scholarship, which used to be offered by Delhi University in those days. It used to be hundred rupees scholarship per month. Our tuition fee was fifteen rupees, the room rent used to be twenty rupees and the mess bill used to be about forty-five rupees. So, you are still left with about twenty rupees at the end of the month and that was a princely sum. Now, Arvind joined the physics honors in Delhi University. Hansraj College happened to be just decondued because the classes were held in the university campus. And I followed Arvind a year later. I was also lucky to have won that entrance scholarship, so I ended up in Hansraj College hostel and that's how I came to know of Arvind. My admiration has simply been going up exponentially ever since. I saw a glimpse of it because when Sapna Sharma was chairing a session and Sahana Murthy was talking about Arvind, her last slide summed it up very well. She wanted to pay tributes to you and it just crossed my mind, here is a person who for generations has been stimulating people and from Anvesh's talk, one thing became pretty obvious. You have been doing it passionately. So, the only example which comes to my mind, I'll give you one or two incidents which stand out in my memory. We ran a quantum mechanics refresher course at Sinzeviya's College in South Mumbai and typical of Arvind, he starts that course, he says, "Well, this is going to be a course. I am Arvind Kumar, blah, blah, blah" and then he starts his lecture. No irrational function, nothing of the sort. Arvind knows only one thing, physics should be communicated without any dilution, no extraneous thoughts. So, the thought which comes to my mind is, apparently Bhimsan Joshi, the famous singer, went to a meeting or something like that and people were asking him to give a speech. Bhimsan Joshi said, "Look, I know of only one thing and that is to sing." So, if you ever asked Arvind Kumar, he will also tell you, give you only a lecture on physics because everything else is extraneous according to him. What is so unusual about this sort of an attitude, we have an environment in which retaining that purity, I think is a laudable achievement. And perhaps you have imbibed all those qualities from your mentor and guru, Professor Udgankar. Several things run through my mind because in the days when I passed out of the training school and joined Atomic Energy Establishment from it, we used to still go to TIFR often and typically meet Arvind at least once or twice or thrice a week. And that is the time I met people like Pradhan, people like Rangavala. And I realized that that purity is actually permeating the entire institution. I think against, this is the point which Professor Pradhan made. So, in that purity, to retain that purity and communicate that purity is something which is indeed very laudatory. I don't know whether I can cite many examples, but I remember that there was a committee which was constituted by DA secretariat. Anupam Das Gupta used to be one of the members of that. And you know, when people make very provocative statements and obviously was joint secretary, RND, he has to find something is not going right and so on. Arvind had a very patient way of handling all those. He would rebut everything by sheer logic. By the third meeting, Anupam Das Gupta had been converted. He had shed all those criticisms. In fact, in those conversations, at times, somebody would say, Professor Yashpal would say, "You know, you should be teaching how a cycle is, the dynamics of a cycle" or something. how a cycle is, the dynamics of a cycle" or something. Arvind says, very privately, he would say, "No, that's a very complex problem. So, in fact, you have to develop the concepts through simpler ideas." Here is a person who is immersed in teaching physics. So, he knows inside out. He would even go looking at the mufassal areas of Maharashtra, trying to understand the learning impediments and so on. Arvind, I can go on, but I think all I can say is salutations to you. Continue your extraordinary work, which is going to stimulate many more generations of people who would be beneficiaries of your enormous capacity and dedication. God bless you and my best wishes.
Thank you, Priska Sani. We'll next hear from Priska N. Satimurti, who is joining online.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, it's my pleasure and privilege to say a few words about Dr. Arvind Kumar. I got to know him, but not exactly by accident. For some reason, I was made a member of some committee of the HBCSE. Then I started interacting with him and I didn't know why I was there. But every meeting was enjoyable and I had nothing much to say. Until one day, he surprised me by asking me to be the chairman of the International Chemistry Olympiad hosted by India. And I didn't know what that meant, although I had given some lectures for the Olympiad students. Then he put me at ease saying, "Look, you be the scientific chairman. I will be the overall chairman." Then I could breathe easily. Then I could agree to do the job. We put together a committee and we started making question paper. First, we have to make model questions. Then of course, you make the real question paper. And many of us came from IITs and some from IASE and so on. And we used to make question paper for JE, for GATE. So, when we started making, we thought, you know, one or two meetings will be done. Then we started interacting with Dr. Arvind Kumar. He would say, "Oh, that's a JE question. Oh, that is a descriptive question." Very quickly, he would demolish most of our questions. We had to learn how to frame questions for the Chemistry Olympiad. Remember, everybody has been talking about the great physicist, Arvind Kumar. Great in research, great in teaching, great in physics education. And here he was sitting through the team which was making the question paper for the Chemistry Olympiad. After several iterations, we lost track of how many iterations we did. Enough has been said about AK's character to be perfect and to arrive at a complete solution. If one wanted an illustration of it, you don't look for physics. Look at the question paper that was made for the International Chemistry Olympiad posted by HBCSE in India. It was a remarkable success. I would give most of the credit to AK. Of course, we were there as a team to make the question paper. There were only two changes made in the question paper and both those changes were English changes made by somebody from Cambridge. That was such a perfect difference. I can go on, but since my time is limited, I would like to say, even that was a limited experience interacting with Dr. Arvind Kumar. I had an opportunity. Most of the time, I end up as a chairman of a committee because the chairman drops off in the last minute. This happened when we had to review HBCSE and Professor D. Balasubramanian was to be the chair and he couldn't come, so I was asked to be the chair and I did. I think for three days or four days, Dr. J. Sri Ramdas was the center director. We went through the entire activities of HBCSE as part of the review. There were international members also. Then I could fathom the contribution of Dr. Arvind Kumar to the center. Anvesh kept using the word institution building. Clearly, Arvind Kumar was an institution builder. If I say that you cannot find anybody a pram, some people may not be happy because always there are successors. I have seen some of the successors. It doesn't reflect on them, but the fact remains, HBCSE is what it is today with all its expansion, with all its activities, largely due to the directorship of Dr. Arvind Kumar. Before closing, I must also add, he was instrumental in forming the Association of Chemistry Teachers. So, it would be Indian Association of Chemistry Teachers along the lines of Indian Association of Physics Teachers, but there was a nomenclature problem. So, finally, it became Association of Chemistry Teachers registered under HBCSE and it continues to be active under the umbrella of HBCSE. And one last thing I would like to say is that, when we were trying to find out, decide the INSA Best Teacher Award, when it came to Arvind Kumar, there was no discussion. It was a unanimous choice. It was very clear, the man has contributed immensely from whatever we have heard from everybody else so far. And I join all of you in saluting Dr. Arvind Kumar and I wish him all the best.
Thank you, Priska Satimurti. I'd like to call Priska Kailash Rustagi.
Good afternoon and congratulations, Arvind. I'm delighted to be here because other than Venod, I think I know you the longest. And we had a big interaction. I met him first time actually in Ramjas College hostel, where he had come to meet Sudesh Mahajan, who was his experimental partner, I presume. And then of course, we met when we were in training school. We got some insights into training school and the life after. And then when I joined TIFR, we shared the office and a lot of other things. So, I'm going to tell you about the research part of it, which is from the TIFR days. Even at that time, there are two constants of Arvind Kumar's character. One is behind a very quiet demeanor. Once he has decided something, he is extremely determined and gets to a decision very, very fast and sticks to it till completion. One anecdote I will recount. Professor Raj Shekran suggested some problem which Arvind liked to do. It involved calculation of lots of traces of matrices, of polyspin matrices, combinations and so on. Some cross-sections ratios were to be calculated. He made a very quick calculation and decided that this is going to take this much time and this much work and so on and so forth. Went to the store, issued a gross of paper, took it to his home in Daissar and came back after one week with all the calculations done. Raj Shekran has not actually calculated how long it will take and I don't know what finally happened to those trace calculations. He had done the job completely and thoroughly. He enjoyed research, had a collaboration with Professor Pati and then went on to Sun. We continued our discussions. He also showed the second trait that I want to talk about is complete objectivity. There were issues about our things that were happening in TIFR. He was asked to actually leave TIFR when he was a postdoc on leave from TIFR. And I was annoyed. So, I wrote to him and he replied. I have that letter still with me. His analysis was completely, completely objective and he completely supported TIFR decision, whatever that was, no matter how it affected us. It didn't actually affect me because I knew from the beginning that the TIFR position is still PhD in spite of being from training school, etc. In his case, he didn't even know that. But that letter is a great reading even now. It's a long letter. I don't want to quote anything from that, but to just say that it's an example of objectivity which he showed then and continues to show now, forever and forever. I think that he is a great teacher I knew from, so to say, childhood because we learned lots of things when we shared a common room where all the students used to sit, Deepan, Arvind, Radhakant and me. And we enjoyed. We also used to discuss what is original physics, what is not so original physics, what is exciting, what is not so exciting, etc., etc. We found many things, we differed on many things, but the dialogue has never stopped. Whenever we meet, we take it off as if we had met only the day before. So, great to have learnt many things from you, above all determination and objectivity. It's very important to remain objective even when personal things are involved and to take action once you have decided that this is the right course to do. I think it's very, very important learnings. You learn and it's an important thing for all the science teaching fraternity. Students learn not only from teachers, they learn a lot from each other. It's important therefore to have a collection of students who are bright because they pull along many other people who are perhaps not that bright. So, combination, this students learning from each other, it's a very important part, for example, in IIT hostels. People even who have parents staying in IIT still prefer to stay in the hostel because students learn a lot from each other. It's an important thing in all the science education or in any education in fact. So, we learnt a lot from Arvind and thank you so much. And I wish you lots of, lots of time of very, very active life as has always been. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Priska Rustagi. I may call Priska Sudhir Panse.
It was sometime in 1973, '74, I had been to University Department of Physics under Faculty Improvement Programme from Sate College. And Dr. Arvind Kumar was in the UDP at that time. So, we started interacting. I used to ask him some questions and that is how we started our discussion on physics. But it is my great privilege that not only I call him as my friend, but he calls me as his friend. We developed friendship. And apart from physics, on various other matters also, there used to be discussions. I used to interact with his study circles since the time it was being held at Nana Chowk. And then when it was being held here also in the beginning, he used to stay at Valeparl at that time and I stayed at Gorega. So, we used to travel back together and discuss many things. We had a nice group, occasionally meeting on some of the evenings to discuss on various matters. Dr. Pradhan was a part of this group. My friend Rajwade was subsequently added to it. Now, his entire career was very deeply and in detail described, but there is one gap there and that is an important incident which I want to tell you. He was in UDP until something like 1981 and he joined Humibhava Centre somewhere around 1983. After leaving University Department of Physics, for some small period, he was a science officer in British Council. And when we used to meet at that time, once he very seriously told me, I was in Sate College at that time, that was Parle College then. So, he was once seriously asking me whether there is any job possibility of physics teacher in your college. I said, "No, right now there is no vacancy." He said, "Even if it is in a junior college of any college in Mumbai, please let me know." I said, "This is ridiculous. Is there any problem with the job at British Council?" Then he said, "No, it's a very nice job. There is hardly any work that I have to do. I have to travel in aeroplanes to different cities in India and see the projects which are being presented. I don't have to go into details of those projects. But my problem is that there is no work that I have to do there and more importantly, I miss teaching. I want to do teaching and even if it is junior college, I will be happy to be a teacher there." Those were his words at that time. Fortunately, Viji Kulkarney had the foresight. Two of them met and Viji Kulkarney took him for Humibhava Centre. Subsequently, Pradhan also joined here and the centre became very big one. And it is the fortunate thing for the students in India, students in Mumbai and around, that he joined Humibhava Centre. Otherwise, it could have been, his passion for teaching, that's what I want to convey. Passion for teaching was so intense, it's so intense, that he would have been a teacher in a junior college also for doing that. That's what he sincerely was saying at that time. But fortunately, he joined here and then he helped and developed physics teaching in many different ways in our country, including the Olympiad Programme about which everyone is talking. So, this was the episode which I wanted to share with you and I wish Dr. Arvind Kumar a very long, healthy and active life in future also. Thank you.
Thank you, Priska Panse. Priska Abbas Rangwal.
Thank you very much for giving me this opportunity. I will fill in ten years which have not been detailed here in Arvind's career. That is the time that we were together in University Department of Physics. I met Arvind somewhere in, I thought mid-sixties, but here I got the exact date, '64 in TIFR. But we didn't interact that very intensely. But in 1971, both of us joined almost simultaneously Department of Physics of University of Mumbai, which had been established in May 1971 and its head was Priska MC Joshi, again from TIFR. There is one more colleague who joined with us, S. C. Padi, who was also from TIFR. There is one more colleague who joined with us, S C Padi, who was also from TIFR. So there was three of us and it was a wonderful time in the sense that it was a new department, lot of things to be done and 1973 or something of that sort, the new syllabus, BSc new syllabus had come into the picture and we had to, kind of, we were involved in framing it. So this is where Arvind starts with his career in teaching and very seriously. I want to highlight a few things which later on reflects in his, people say his devotion to teaching. Initially, I mean, he taught, somebody did mention mathematical methods at Lennery and Kraszewski's book, but he was also teaching nuclear physics as a special thing, a special course. And what would you do? He would, he had to, there was this, some 60 lectures or 40 lectures have to be given, part of it is angular momentum, say first, you start with it. He would pick up Edmund's book from cover to cover, cover entire angular momentum, the kind of thing, rather than take a book in nuclear physics or quantum mechanics and then take that part of it. Secondly, he also, and I'm saying this thing because it reflects in his later career in HBA, sorry, I have the, Homi Baba, HBCSC, right, I got it, because there are lots of, the, for instance, he had to teach nuclear physics, one year he would take up a book and I still remember it and most of you wouldn't even know the name, Eisenberg and Greiner and he would cover from that thing. Next year, it's Igal Talmy's book. Third, I do not know where he touched Bohr and Motternson's book or not, but that's what he would do, take a, pick a book and go through it. So that is his hallmark and we used to have lots of discussion concerning what to teach, how to teach and I think we had really wonderful time under benign headship of M C Joshi who would allow us to do anything. Now you must realise that what would happen when you want to teach something which is much more than what is given in the syllabus which says 40 lectures. So you call extra classes, right? You, each lecture would be, instead of one hour, it would be two hours, extra classes and then you copy students on Sundays, five hours and stuff like that. So that's the kind of thing which started early in, when he was in the university. The point that I want to also make is the following, is that you must realise the university structure. We have this syllabus which is made by some set of people, you may be involved, you may not be involved in it. Then there is the teaching. Now Mumbai University has a very peculiar thing at that point of time, namely, there would be something like 150 students enrolled for physics in MSC, but most of them would be with the colleges. But they would have lectures, centralised lectures in the University Department of Physics. The student, so you, and there we used to teach and then there is this examination, the paper setter. Paper setter would look at the syllabus and he is not involved in the teaching, so you would set the question. The point that I'm trying to make is the following, students, students nevertheless attended everything. The reason for that is, the kind of, they were even implicitly, they realised that they were benefiting from the, whatever was being told to them. We had, we used to have lots of discussion, people have said that he is very, I mean, he is very incisive, very logical and stuff like that. Let me emphasise one part of his personality, I hope you will not mind it, which no one has mentioned it, he is a romantic at heart, believe me, believe me, he is a romantic at heart. He was a great admirer of Philip Kumar. Okay. For example, at that time, there was this movie called Saraswati Chandr, if you remember, and he was sold on that thing. And what is the story of Saraswati Chandr? A boy falls in girl with a girl, falls in love with a girl and stuff like that, girl gets married to somebody else and he would be moved by that thing, you know, kind of thing. So please correct your impression of Arvind Kumar. He is not a bland physics logician, you know, kind of thing. This is Arvind Kumar and we used to have lots of lovely discussions and of course, I was the first sufferer of his, you know, kind of incisive logic, you know, kind of thing and we had wonderful time together. I, I really learnt a lot from him. Unfortunately, I have not been able to implement whatever he has been trying to communicate. It has been mentioned, one thing I want to say about Disuza and Balla Ayar. Disuza, this is her PhD, it was mentioned, so I'm just repeating it. On, I thought it was self-induced transparency, it's a topic in quantum optics. Then the next person does in general relativity, Balla Ayar, right? So he could move with ease from one to the other and so these traits that one finds in a more kind of pronounced manner coming up later in his career were already there in, when he was in the university. And we had wonderful time together, going to canteen, have cups of teas, snacks and it was a, university has a very different atmosphere. There are many departments, not necessarily science departments and so you interact with people of other disciplines and Arvind has left a huge impression on me personally and on many others. I think, I think he's acknowledged it that probably his basic things formulated when he was in the university. Now, one thing which is, I don't, I have not understood it, why he decided to leave, maybe Arvind can explain it, department and join British Council, you know, kind of, at that point of time, what was the attraction, I don't know. Anyway, but that's where he lost him. Unfortunately, simultaneously Professor M C Joshi passed away. Anyway, so Arvind, thank you very much for the lovely time that we had in the university and all that you gave to us. Wish you all the very best for many, many years to come and a very productive life. Thank you very much. Mark my word, he is a romantic at heart.
Thank you, Professor Rangwal and although it's not my turn and I've already spoken, but since you have spoken about this romantic thing, so with AK's permission, let me, let me also share something. So AK, I think is a fan of Shahrukh Khan, but, but according to him, Shahrukh Khan's Devdas is an absolute blasphemy of the original Devdas and, and the other thing is that, if you think that he is only fond of old movies and all that, no, he gives a very detailed commentary on the railway station scene of, guess the movie, Dilwale Dulhania Le Jayege. So, so he has these facets also. Okay. May I call on Professor A P Deshpande? And after this probably we will take a break, but we have something to do before the break. But first Professor Deshpande.
Professor, Arvind Kumar is multilingual person, let me speak in Marathi. Dusri dhabab darim aaj aur aache ki maharsh tashasana cha marathi bhaasa salaagar samay tere mi aasliya mule, mi marathi bolo ilabail. Arvind Kumar, he marathi vidnayan parashad echa 2006 saali, yavat maal jillya madhe vane la bhalela sammealan cha adhiksha hota hai. Ani te sammealan bhaghitla nanta, te manale he sammealan tumta far serious nature cha hai ani kharo khari changla padhte ne organise kelela hai. Taa mule, taa yacha made, tacha purvi, ami chala sammealan mana iso, amche adhiksha de udhar, apple ab industry che chairman, te manale sammealan apexa, yala adhiveshan mana karane adhik serious asta. Ani Arvind Kumar ani te sanghitla cha nanta, ali kade jaavle ela taa bhaasana sangra karne che ek sandhi, manav ikas prakashana tarfe amchakdaali, toh mi Arvind Kumarana asa mantla ki acha made tumala kai sudhana karai cheka, tani taavard to veka raatri madhe sudhana karun dilhi, manje kuni tarai manale ki raatri ek vazon 50 minutes aani te pat hota message, taa padhte ne bohtak tani kam kele, ani chatkan te sagra pat ho ra. 2008 saali, pradyapak udgavkarana inshi varsha dali teva ek karekram ami aitha Homi Baba Centre madhe keela ta, do newsata, ani MGK mainan tara alaile hota. Toh taa karekrama sathie atyant baarkai ne, tacha planning, Arvind Kumar yani kelela hota ani tacha shreye vinakaran mala professor udgavkarani dilha that you are the best event manager. Taa azmi parat kartu, amchakdaata. Do 1990 saalta National Council for Science and Technology Communication, DSTP Directorate, tacha tarfe vidnayan prasar sathie, Homi Baba Vidnayan Shikshan Kenrala puraskar meela la, taa sahela mala puraskar meela la ta, taa maami doghadra ekatra hoto, roomai ame ekatra share keleli hoti, dusre vishy ame doghai parat ekatra alo, taa maali to swas tamsa mala tava leela changla prake ghadlela hota. Goa, Gove Madaji Steam Conference dali, taa conference ek chitra maga she dakhola, pan taa i pexa mala sangai che dusri gosta aache, ki taa conference sathi aalele lokan na je pravas bhada deyto hota, te deynas sathi swata Arvind Kumar baslele hota, itkya gam hiri ani tani ti gosta gehetli, tani aap tumcha peki jani administration madhe kam keela aseel, tanna mahite ki barez khattke taa pravas acha bhada deeta na hotastat, tewda sathi muddam Arvind Kumar taa thikani baslele hota. Malot, Arvind Kumarani ja anek gosti aitha Homi Baba Vidnayan Shikshan Kenrat kele, tacha peki Olympiad sa jo karekram tani shuru keela, toh tancha sirpesa madhe ek novin asa turak ho la gela, tacha karan Bharatachi Shikshana cha khetra madhe, ji kai khati ahe, ti lokan cha nazarila taa mule yau lagli, ane dar varshi kai na kai, kai na kai medals, apn medvin anto, evdast nave, tar ya thikani anek vishyamadliya conferences, Olympiad, bhavani acha mansuda Homi Baba Vidnayan Shikshan Kenrala meela lela hai, taa mule, Arvind Kumar yani ek changla peki leadership, Homi Baba Vidnayan Shikshan Kenrala dillela hai. Arvind Kumar, tumala dirghai usse laho, nustar dirghai usse nave, te changla arogya cha laho, ashi ichha parkat karto, dhanyavata.
Thank you, Professor Deshpande. We'll soon take a break, but before the break, we have something to do because it's after all in celebration of Professor Arvind Kumar's birthday, so we will have a cake cut by him. So I will request AK to come on stage and the others to just quickly arrange for the cake. And then we'll have a tea break after that and come back in about 20 minutes. Lights, lights on the stage please. Yeah AK, if you can, please come on stage. And I invite other, other people also, whoever wants, especially HBCSE people, please come on stage. Mina, please come. Anybody else can come, yeah. I am told that nowadays candles have gone out of fashion. But there's, yeah, please come, AKs. Yeah, please come, come, come. Please come. Whoever wants to come, please come. It's a birthday celebration, so please come. Yeah, yeah, of course. Professor, Apthay, please come. Okay, so we'll have a break now, please, there's tea outside and we go out and we'll have some of the cake also, of course. So, and then we come back in about 20 minutes if possible. Sorry, we, we also have a big card to give you. We'll continue with the reminiscences and tributes, there are many people still waiting to speak, but before we do that, because after those, Professor Arvind Kumar would like to say few words at the end. So we thought that this would, this break would be a good opportunity for, I would invite our centre director, Professor Anup Bhaticharya, to propose the vote of thanks for the symposium before we go on with the reminiscences.
Yeah, we thought, we thought we would just end with AK's words and not have to do formalist things after that. So, it's again in order to be here back and thank many people without whom this event won't have happened. The first is the, the major conspirators of the event, called the Symposium Organising Committee or whatever. This is people like Anvesh, Mashud, Deepa, Shirish, Praveen, thank you all. I think you all agree this was a great idea, we should have done this, we should have absolutely done this. Thank you all for taking the trouble and getting everything together, writing all the letters, inviting the people, doing the needful, but then to actually pull it off requires But then to actually pull it off requires the efforts, skills, the competencies, the, you know, work, hard work of a lot of people at the centre and beyond. And I'd like to thank Manoj for taking care of the website, designing the registration materials, including this beautiful pad that I think is really nice. Sumana, Sandhya, Shvetah, Suchita, thank you for arranging, ensuring that we've not just been fed, but fed very well. Vagmare, Bamne, Shanoi, thank you for taking care of accommodation, transport, all the logistics to ensure that people have been hosted and brought here well. Suchita, Sonal, Rahul, Gajanan, all the registration materials and, you know, innumerable, small, little, large administrative tasks whenever called upon, always ready to help. This has also been part of the Symposium on Physics Education, not just today, but, you know, we've been having lectures here and again. Rani and Sachin, if you're hiding there. Mamta, Pratesh, Manoj, Shrirish, thank you for ensuring that the sessions ran well, all the talks were loaded and everything, all that happened. Back end, of course, the entire, you know, the purchase and accounts teams who've been taking care of the TADA and all the materials that we need to get for this. Pragati, Krishna, your teams, Rasam, all of you. And then, of course, you know, the participants of the physics camp. I hope you had a great experience here. And, you know, you will go back carrying behind you a small bit of HBCSE. And a lot of, lot of memories of not just physics, but all the interactions you've had and all the wonderful stuff you've done here. Thank you all the other physics teachers from across the country who've come here, especially today. All the senior colleagues and friends of AK. All our ex, the members of the centre, our previous. Mic, mic, mic is off, off, off. It's not me, me, me. It's, it's something happening there. And, you know, all of the HBCSE members right now, the present HBCC members, all our staff, students, thank you all. Thank you all for helping us ensure that this event went off so well. And with this, I think let's get back to hearing the reminiscences. We'll have a few more people who've expressed their desire to speak. And then, of course, we'll hear AK at the end of it all. So, thank you.
Thank you, Anup. I would now like to call Professor Deepan Ghosh, another person who has known AK for very long.
I have known Arvind since 1966. When I joined JFR as a graduate student. And after so many people have spoken about him, I have very little things to add, excepting one thing. When Anvesh asked me to talk here. And he said that it is in commemoration of Arvind's eightieth birthday. That was one good reason for me not to agree. And the reason was, Arvind is so meticulous about what he hears, every physics sentence. I mean, I have to be extra careful. So when I came in the morning and Anvesh told me that Arvind is unable to come in the morning, but he will join later, I was actually relieved. So Arvind, it has been great knowing you. I have interacted with him over all these years since sixty-six in very many ways. And as all of you have pointed out, I've learnt a lot from him. And his contributions, I don't have to recount again and again. Wish you a very long career after that. Thank you so much.
Yeah, I would now like to call upon Professor R V Hasur, who has joined online. And may I request the others who are online to please keep your microphones muted. Professor R V Hasur, maybe.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yeah, just a minute. Can you just, yeah, we can hear you, just wait for a minute, we will get your video.
Yeah.
Yes, you may start.
Okay, thank you, Anvesh, in the first place for asking me to speak here. On this special occasion of celebration, celebrating the eightieth birthday of Professor Arvind Kumar. I have known Arvind Kumar for so many years in many different, on many different occasions, in many different capacities. Firstly, from TIFR, as a member of their committee on the Homi Baba Centre for Science Education. I have seen his commitment to education then is so deep rooted. Committed for school education, improving quality of education at the school level, quality of physics education, chemistry education and all aspects.
Hasur, you are muted accidentally, I think, so please unmute.
Yeah, okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay. So it is a great occasion and, you know, I don't know how to express my words about Professor Arvind Kumar. He is such a fantastic leader and a teacher. And I learnt a lot from him. And firstly, to be so committed to the job you are at. With regard to the education he was taking up for school education at Homi Baba Centre for Science Education in many different ways. Going to various schools, organizing lectures over there, workshops over there, writing books in Marathi, Hindi, and he also part of the curriculum making at the NCRITs. And many different ways, he was total commitment, total commitment for education. And no wonder, of course, HBCSE thrived very well under his leadership. And then he organized the Olympics. As part of the whole chemistry Olympics, their international Olympics, which was organized very meticulously. He was very careful in going through every small detail of the organization, how things are done and how, what are the equipments required. Where are the, where are the locations, where these experiments can be done. Coordinated with various different institutions in this regard. And that was wonderful. That was a great experience in the Olympics. And of course, the Olympic programme has been going on very well for so many years. And the students are becoming better and better with all the education there. And then he organized this in the US, this new initiative to teach at the, those who are classed past the school and going towards the college. And they are in a different level now. So therefore, and they needed a different kind of an education, he actually mentored, I mean, made appropriate adjustments to accommodate this kind of people, conduct classes. At the Homi Baba Centre for Science Education, to give them a training which is, which will make them good scientists in the final place. He himself was a great scientist, outstanding theoretical physicist with his training we had. And we go through every, every detail and to make the understanding very fundamental. So that was, that was very clear from his approach and the meticulous way. And then in, then in the UMDA Centre for Excellence in, and there is CBS. And he and Professor Chitray actually steered this centre. And with the commitment, with a lot of difficulties over there, as one can imagine, that the place where you are in, you are going in a university environment. And the funding coming from the DAE, it is a very complicated situation. But the commitment to education did not change, actually a very great idea that using the resources available in different colleges and institutions in Mumbai. To improve the quality of education in the universities was a great idea. And this was actually to do, provide an initiative which can be taken up at other universities to improve the quality of education all over the country. This was the great thinking. Because establishing standalone institutions is so expensive and it is not possible to do it too many times. Therefore, this was a model which was actually conceived by Dr Kakorkar and then Professor Chitray and then Arvind Kumar. They were all the founders of this place. And it was a struggle there. And one could see, I got a lot of advice from him while making the changes over there, building up the institution. And he was a great advisor, taking every detail, looking at every detail of the things which are practical and which are not practical. That is something which is outstanding. And of course, he continued to teach for so many years and the students would enjoy his teaching and discussions even outside the classrooms. And that was a great experience. He created a kind of an atmosphere of Guru Kul for the students over there who are living there. They're taking a lot of interest in physics. And initially, it was all physics only in the Centre for Excellence. And subsequently, other fields were added like chemistry, biology and mathematics and all of those things were there. Mathematics also came up. And Dr Balwan Singh, who was there, actually spearheading the mathematics program over there. So it, so it was a continuous growth in the, in the centre. And it has seen through many patches now. And all of them are doing extraordinarily well at various places in the world. Many of them are in the country and many are abroad. And you can hear the compliments from them as to how they benefited by being in this. This is a unique place because of the quality of education which was there and the intense interactions between the teachers and the students. That is something which they remember forever. So that was a great occasion for me to be with Dr Arvind Kumar, who has been a mentor, inspirer and, and various, in various capacities. And his commitment to education and commitment to the job at hand, that is something which is outstanding. And eighty years is not too much. Actually, I mean, he has many more years to go. Surely he will continue, go, complete the century. And surely he should be able to continue with good health and the peace of mind. So I think I will, it is very difficult to describe too many in a short, in a short period of time. But I wish him all the best and keep being active and with you, wish you good health and peace of mind. Dr Arvind Kumar, wish you all the best. Thank you.
Thank you, Professor Hasur. May I now call Professor PK Aluwalia, President IAPT.
Thank you, Anvesh. I am really very happy to be present on this occasion and meet Professor Arvind. I first heard Professor Arvind in Lucknow. Sir, you must be remembering. Professor Vagmare was the president of IAPT at that time. And you gave a lecture on alternative conceptions, if I am remembering that correctly. And that was my first initiation on physics education research itself. So that was very interesting. And after that, we were corresponding with you also. And you sent us the American Journal of Physics Resource Letters on Physics Education Research. And I think that was how we got interested, could gather literature and do work in a university setup itself. I really am thankful that you initiated us into that kind of an area. And there is one, other interesting thing which we recently actually had the occasion to have from Professor Arvind. We started a physics education research series of lectures. On online lectures under the banner of IAPT. We made a request to Professor Arvind and he readily agreed. And then he was very particular that on one topic, what topic he is going to really talk about. And he picked up the topic which was disciplinary practices in physics education research. That lecture went on for almost one hour and fifteen minutes. And I want to tell you something very interesting at the end of that lecture. One of our participants raised hand and he said that, sir, we want to find the error in, the derivation of error in one upon R is equal to one upon R1 plus one upon R2 for resistances. And I have used two methods. One method gives me one answer and the other method gives me the other answer. And Professor Arvind said, okay, all right, I'll look into this problem and come back to you. And around twelve, to be precise, eleven forty-seven, Professor Arvind sends me solution of that by both the methods giving the same answer. I mean, that is the kind of dedication which you find is rare. It's unimaginable. And he also said that, rather very humble way of Professor Arvind, I liked it. That I request you that you please share this solution with the gentleman who really asked this question. So now you can imagine the kind of dedication which Professor Arvind reflects on each one of us. And that is inspirational. I think sir has been a member of IAPT right from the very beginning. Sir, your member number is three eight six, life member number. Mine is three two, three two six, sir. I was a member before you. But it is very interesting that you have been there with us. And ever since we have been on now web, we are very much connected with you. You are receiving our mails. And we hope that you will keep on guiding us and blessing us because IAPT has a very big mandate to work upon. And your guidance and your deep insight into physics education and science education are, think, are an asset of IAPT itself. I look forward to your guidance, sir. And I wish you on behalf of IAPT and on my personal behalf, a very happy birthday, maybe slightly belated, sir. And healthy life. And I hope you will keep on blessing with your insights on physics on the IAPT forums also. There was one other thought also, sir, which was coming. I was seeing that when your CV was being discussed by Professor Anvesh. You have written lots of articles in IAPT bulletin also. Maybe what we can try to do is bring them together and publish those as a volume in an E format. And I would seek your permission to do that. If you will give us that permission, we will be very happy. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Professor Aluwalia. Professor Pratibha Jali.
Thank you, Anvesh. It's such an honor to be able to meet Professor Arvind Kumar again. And I had my fan moment because I got a beautiful picture with you. And I can only say what a pleasure it has been to get to know you and the very many ways in which you have supported many of us across the country. I think I first met you in two thousand two in Goa. There was this Casmi UNESCO workshop that Homi Baba Centre did. And there you were and Professor Agarwal was in charge, but there you were sitting at the table. And all the bills that were coming, you were personally looking into it. And I smuggled in just one line and I told you, you know what, I want to do a physics conference. And you were so busy surrounded by people, you said, count me in, I'm interested. And I held you to that word when we did the two thousand five conference. One didn't know from where, how we would set it up. The ICP had invited us to do it in the Einstein year, two thousand five. And the support that came from Homi Baba Centre showed that we are a community in India. And you just had to walk up to Shubh Bhattchar, the director of TIFR. And we could bring Hor Stormer, the Nobel laureate, to speak at the conference. Funding came in from there. And that kind of a support is really incredible. And then you came down to help us with reviewing and looking at the abstracts and spent couple of days at Miranda House. And it has been such a wonderful experience also to have then come to the Homi Baba Centre to make presentation of one's work, get some feedback. And in two thousand eleven, when you nudged many of us out of slumber to write articles for the Physics Association Special Issue. I think it helped one to pull together one's thoughts and do a review. And today, when Professor Vijay Singh pulled out that so well maintained issue, I realized that I had not maintained my volume. But it made me very, very nostalgic. So in more ways, in one, you have really been a role model and you have touched our lives and in a very quiet and gentle manner. You've nudged us to do better work, but you also supported when support was needed. So in two thousand So in two thousand five, Dr. Chidambaram sat through the conference and he said, he called you and he called me to his office and he said, "Just come, why is there only one Homi Baba Centre? Why doesn't the country have more?" And he nudged and said, "Create a consortium." And today, yesterday, we had a panel discussion on that. But we did call everyone from the country who was engaged in physics education to come and discuss how we could share our resources and create them together. But much more importantly, there was a follow-up. You may not remember, but for someone who was at that point, you know, had an uphill task to establish a career in physics education and physics education research, it meant a lot to me that you and Dr. Mr. Rotale from the National Science Museum and three of us met and we brainstormed. And the result was an invitation to set up the D S Kothari Research Centre at Miranda House, which was a game changer. And today, I presented that journey. And so I will always remember those milestones. And at all those milestones, your help has not been told, it's not been talked about. And that's why this fan moment of my photograph with you is very, very precious. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Professor Jali. Professor Vijay Singh.
As we reflect on the past, there is a certain warmth that comes with reminiscing about the good old times. And how should I put it? And there's also those moments that hold a special place in our hearts. So I'm using Professor Arvind Kumar's eightieth anniversary as a prop to remember a few good old times, happy old times. Can you turn it on for me, please? Okay. And you'll see different people and they are there for a certain reason. It's not coming. I'm sorry. So basically, when I, in nineteen ninety-eight, when the physics, when the Olympiad Programme was put into place with a memorandum of understanding between Professor Arvind Kumar and Dharkar, and Professor Dharkar, I should say Professor Dharkar, and the late Professor Dharkar, I was very pleased to write editorial in the Bulletin of the Indian Association of Physics Teachers, of which I was the, I was the, how should I put it? I was the editor. And as Arvind Kumar saw it, A K saw it, I will just use the word A K if you don't mind, instead of saying Professor Arvind Kumar. It takes two seconds extra, which Anvish doesn't like. So, so A K, without my soliciting, he invited me to Homi Baba Centre to participate as a resource person in the first Olympiad, nineteen ninety-eight, when we went to Raikjavik. Okay? Where is this? And A K always placed the back, no, he did, he did a lot of work, I would say. But he always was in the background and never pushed himself forward. But anyway, this is not to say the others pushed themselves. Let me go ahead. It's not going forward, why is that? Maybe I'll go like this. I'm really sorry, it's not working. Click on what? Ah, good. But it's not showing there. So what you see is nineteen ninety-eight and that is Professor Pradhana. Pradhana was the dean at that time and that is Raikjavik, nineteen ninety-eight. And Professor Nakdaran. But the reason I point this out is because Professor Pradhana and Rajesh Kapurday, I'm not sure if he's in the audience, but Rajesh Kapurday were the, I mean, were, saved our lives, you know, because they were in charge of the experimental programme. And they had the experiments ready. Not ready, but they, at least they had something that we had a fig leaf to cover ourselves for the Asian Physics, for the International Physics Olympiad. So that is Professor Pradhana. And when we went there, I mean, those were magic, magic times. Okay? They were like miracle and miracle times because you will, there's a story I have to tell you and I'll take one minute more to tell you the story. And the story is that when Professor Pradhana went for the visa. Okay, and when you go for the visa, you know that you're going to get rejected. Your heart beats, starts beating faster. Okay, and you find that it is impossible to, and you're sure that it's going to get rejected on some technicality. But he was invited by the Raikjavik person to come upstairs and have tea and cookies with him. I mean, not only did they get the visa, he got the other things also. And when they went there, one of the students, I think Vijay Bhart got the prize for a thematic problem. And that problem was, "In Iceland, how do the hot springs work?" Okay? And not, no Icelandic student got it, no American student got it, no Russian student got it, but an Indian student got this award and we were very, very happy. Okay, he got a bronze medal. And the next slide which I want to show is this Professor Dharkar, nineteen ninety-nine. He was the other mainstay of the Physics Olympiad Programme and the, and the Science Olympiad Programme. So that's Professor Dharkar there. And that was in Italy. And one student that I want to point out is Sivrat Raju, whom some of you would know. He is a leading string theorist and he's at this place in Bangalore, I C T S. I C T S, yeah. Okay? That is Sivrat Raju. You go to nineteen, two thousand now, that is Turkey. No, no, sorry, England. In England, I mean, something amazing happened. For the first time, we got two gold medals. And Professor Arvind Kumar was not the leader. The leaders were Professor, a very good friend of mine, and another mainstay of the experimental programme, Dr. Desai. And of course, Sirish is here, so I should acknowledge him also. And, and Arvind Kumar landed there. And because they say, you know, someone landed in Ahmedabad and an Indian team lost. And there's a lot of noise being made about, "Kaise a Palwati lag gaya?" Here, what happened, the opposite of Panwati happened. Okay? The opposite of Panwati was that we got two gold medals and we were number three. Okay? We were number three in among sixty-five nations. And we were on top of the world at that time. But at that point, Professor Arvind Kumar did something which is absolutely amazing. He went from there to Amsterdam and maybe Savita can correct me. And he threw the hat in and he said, "Next year, we will hold the International Chemistry Olympiad." Okay? And so, you know, he, that is a big leap because you were in the second year of, or the third year of the, of the Olympiad Programme and he decided that we will do the I C H O because one country had backed out. Okay? And I have to tell you, I was in Berlin to, and I went to the Berlin Philharmonic Orchestra. And the Berlin Philharmonic, no, the conductor does very little. He does, puts his finger up and all the violins are playing. And he pushes the hand down and all the drums start, all the drums start beating very hard. And that is the way A K used to work. I mean, he would just get everything done by a gesture. And everything in the Homi Baba Centre works because of a gesture. Okay? So I thought that is a great way to work. I mean, he never really said, "Now you do this" or something. But it was, you know, that was done. Okay? So I C H O was done, it was amazing. I never thought it would, it would work, you know. You know, but then you know, you heard Satyamurti saying that it was a very successful and Savita will certainly testify to that. And the last one I want to show is just to say what good times they were. You know, this, this is again Asian Physics Olymp, International Physics Olympiad in Italy. And this is Dharkar again, Professor Dharkar, the late Professor Dharkar. And this person is Abdullah Sadik from Pakistan. He's a Pakistani leader. We were very, he was an absolute gentleman. And all this fear you have about Pakistan all vanished. You know, and it was just that, we always thought, you know, that, and everybody was very friendly and everybody over here was very friendly to me. I didn't belong to this department. But the entire office was put at my disposal as I became the academic coordinator of the Olympiad Programme. And I have to really remember, where is Summana? She's not here. And Gajanan. I mean, they worked round the clock. I mean, I mean, so it was an impossible task. This is again, I show, this is again Turkey, where we won about three gold medals. But look at this student over here. That student here wrote me a letter about last year. He's the, when he became the CEO of Twitter, of the Twitter Programme. So, and then of course, something else happened, something bad happened to me. "Panwati mai laga diya" because he wrote to me. Okay, right? But you should remember the first guy. You must remember the guy in the front. Okay? This is Arvind Thiyagrajant, J U rank one. He remembered everything, I mean, nineteen thirty-seven in loads. How much did India score? He had a phenomenal memory. Okay? Badi mushkil se hota hai chaman mein didhavare payda. So they were like that. This is two thousand and four chemistry. You can see some old friends here. And they are there, some of them are in the audience. Sopan Ghosh and Dr. Samant. And you see this, we were also very happy because for the first time in physics and chemistry, a girl got the gold medal. And that is Priya Gupta. And before she went, I thought I'll test her out. You know, I just wanted to take a test. So I asked her, started describing a question in physics. Okay? By the time I'd ended the question, she went down and wrote the answer. So even before you posed the question, she had known the answer. These are the kinds of students we got. And we still get sometimes, not as lucky as in those good old days. To just say, "Kehata nahi hai, when you write, write down." So, I'm sorry. And here is a biology Olympiad. I kept this particularly because they all look so happy. You know, we are all looking glum, we are not, not that happy, but they look very happy. And this one, I think, Anvish has already shown. But this, I kept this deliberately to say that people wanted to be associated with the Olympiad Programme. You call up somebody to be the chief guest, you call up somebody to get money from government agency. In those days, I don't know, I'm told that nowadays, these things are not that good. But you could always get it. And that is, that is because I think the programme was so solid and Professor Arvind Kumar's reputation was also very solid, you know. By the way, since I see Rajaram Nityanand, he said something when we got three gold medals here. He used a statistical mechanical phrase in Turkey. He said that now, Vijay Singh, you are in trouble because there is very little space at the top. I mean, now you only can go down. Now you can only, instead of standing third, you will only stand fifth or tenth or something. So I remember that, no, no. Anyway, so now let me tell you about A K's contribution. He led from the front in the beginning. I wish he would continue in the end also and said these thematic problems. But in the beginning, he led from the front. There was a healthy competition in making what is called thematic problems. And the thematic problem is one in which you'd make judicious approximations, use a variety of concepts, okay? And use a variety of techniques, okay, to arrive and to understand natural phenomena or a modern topic in physics. And in nineteen ninety-eight, he began with a bang and here is the bang. He set a problem on the Dirac monopole and quantization of charge at that level for the twelfth standard student, where the student had to make, understand momentum, angular momentum conservation and make use of the impulse approximation. Okay, he said, "If a monopole exists, show that charge is quantized." Okay? I think you remember this, this is meticulously typed by Summana. I also remember, because I remember Summana typing it. So you know, I can, I can still visualize her late night typing it. The next one is of course, another problem in two thousand based on a resonance article by Professor Mukunda on the genesis of the photon picture of light. Arvind Kumar read through that article and constructed that problem. Okay? As I said, there was a healthy competition. There is one I made on the magnetar, okay? And at one late night, when we were making the problem on the Chandrasekhar limit, which is actually conceptually, I mean, brilliant problem to make because it's just gravitational collapse and Fermi pressure outside, Pauli exclusion principle. Okay? We all remember and I have to remember also Sunil Datta. Arvind Kumar, Sunil Datta, at times, Ravi Bhattacharji would come up and join in. We made this problem and Sunil Datta quoted a brilliant poem by Harvin Shah Badchan. And this is the last problem I would just want to show. This is the discovery of the neutron which Professor Arvind Kumar made. And this uses also a variety of concepts, including a very meticulous two-page derivation on why you have to have a head-on collision for maximum recall velocity. Okay? And this is, the rest are also in Arvind Kumar's handwriting, but they are photocopies. But I have this one in his original handwriting which I've dug out. And since we have to give gifts on the eightieth birthday, this is my gift to you. I'll give it back to you, Professor Arvind Kumar.
Okay, clearly, that will be hard to match. But, but Professor Mayank Bhaiya.
So following Arvind Kumar, following Vijay Singh on Arvind Kumar is probably the most difficult assignment I've ever had. So I want to quickly say a couple of things. There's one incident I want to recall, which is the reason why I came here actually. I'm sure Arvind Kumar doesn't remember it because it was a rather minor incident in his life. This was seventy-seven, I was an MSc student in Bombay University. And Arvind Kumar had gone and given a lecture at some college. And he had started with Arvind Kumar's side. So he said, "These great scientists have done some great work. I will now explain it to you and these are the things we don't know about it." And the students were completely surprised. The students were expecting a lecture saying, "Oh, these are great things that happen in nature. I am explaining it to you and you should be very grateful to me for explaining it to you." That is generally how popular science lectures go these days. But Arvind Kumar gives the other way around, talking about crediting others, talking about limitations of ideas and stuff like that. And the students were quite surprised and one of them was my friend. So he called me up and said, "You know, Arvind Kumar gives this kind of a lecture." And it so happened that few days later, I caught Arvind Kumar while we were going for tea. And I asked him that, "Look, this is not the kind of lecture, students, explain what happened." And at that time, he told me. Louder? Okay. At that time, he told me that, "Look, Mang," and I don't think he knew my name. He said, "Look, at the end of the day, science is a continuing enterprise and you must make it clear to the students that it is something that is dynamic and that happens and that evolves from human mind. And you should not dehumanize science at all because that is the worst thing you can do." And that single five minute changed my life. Because till then, I was doing physics because I was just curious about what great minds had done. Suddenly, Arvind Kumar pointed out to me that I also could do research. And that came as a surprise to me. And the rest, as they say, is history. So I joined T I F R and all that. So that was, that was a life-changing experience of just five minutes of interaction with Arvind Kumar. Then Arvind Kumar joined T I F R, I was at T I F R and lots of committees I came to. And Anvish famously maintained that you could never win an argument against Arvind Kumar. And there were many, many committees on which I said, I attended every one of them, hoping to defeat Arvind Kumar at least once. I never succeeded. Arvind Kumar always managed. Because whatever objection I would raise, he would have thought about it, worked about around to it and come out with an answer. So you were obviously helpless. You felt very foolish actually raising a point because Arvind Kumar had already thought it through and worked it out. His meticulousness was phenomenal. His commitment to what he told to students, however casually, was phenomenal. And in many ways, that made me what I eventually became. So thank you very much, sir. And while other wish you good health, I would like to request you to continue to pose more interesting questions for the rest of my life. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Prasamayang Bhaiya. Prasamayang Oglaapurkar.
I am very fortunate to have long association with Professor Aravind Kumar for more than 20 years. Since 2001, I am coming here for OCSC Physics, RGC, PDC and so on. So at least 50 times, I have stayed in this campus for more than 200 days. So we had a lot of interaction with Professor Aravind Kumar. Before about 20 years, this center has only two buildings, this main building and that hostel. No other building, Olympiad facility in our US, no there. So HBCSE was short of space. And some programs were arranged outside. And again, I am very fortunate that two programs were arranged in Abhashek Garwari College, Pune. And I was the convener of these programs. In 2002, at that time, there was exponential component of info, inco and inbo. For all the three examinations, the exponential component was organized in Garwari College in 2002. Professor Aravind Kumar was personally present there. I was looking after all the arrangements and so on. Of course, physics, chemistry teams, Savit Aladgi and Rekha Vartak and all these staff was present there in Garwari College. That was 2002. In 2003, OCSC Physics was organized in Garwari College. Again, being head of physics department, I was the convener of that program. Entire physics team of HBCSE stayed in Pune, guesthouse of Garwari College. Of course, Aravind Kumar, Vijay Singh, Shirish, Rajesh and others. They stayed in Pune and we carried out the program very successfully. I remember in, on the last day of that OCSC, it was final selection. After completing three exponential tests, three theory tests, results was compiled and there was selection. Present prosecutor of arbitration was not there at that time. And there was a long discussion of selection of team with marks of all these students, particularly first 10 students. We were, used to discuss for each student. And our discussion went long till quarter to two in the midnight. Aravind Kumar was present personally. He was looking after everything. He was looking after the list. He was taking part in the discussion. And the team was finalized by about 1:45 in the late night. And next day at 7 o'clock, he was there in the Garwari College, three meters away, three kilometers away. At 7 o'clock, they showed this dedication to the work. Again, I also remember that maybe in 2006 or so. Again, the discussion went long. We were in his office till 1:30 in the night. And he was very carefully observing and finalizing the list. Very active. So very dedicated person. I have attended some of his lectures in the earlier OCSCs. Particularly, I remember his lectures on special theory of relativity. Excellent teacher. I, I experienced that. He is extremely good teacher. Also, I have read some of his books. Particularly, I remember his book on chaos and fractals. Excellent, very difficult ideas presented in a lucid manner. Where different concepts presented in a very lucid manner. So Aravind Kumar is a renowned physicist with exceptional command on the subject. As an, as a director of this center and also during NHC meetings, I have attended at least five meetings, NHC meetings under the chairmanship of Aravind Kumar sir. I always observed that he is expert or very efficient administrator, very efficient administrator. He handles the chairman position in such an efficient way. Sometimes we are wonderstruck when some unusual situation arises. He handles the things in such a nice manner. I talked to Dharkar sir, only AK sir can do this sometimes. So in all these about 20 years, I never came to know how our friendship developed. In 2006, Astronomer Olympiad was hosted by HBCSE. And one or two days program was in Pune for that NCRA. And again, Professor Aravind Kumar and myself, we moved to different places for making the arrangements and so on. So our friendship developed a lot. Very cooperative and helping. I remember twice I have used his car. I requested him to give his car. Once I got appointment with Chief Minister Vilasra Deshmu, who was my friend in young days, young ages. But in 2007 or 8, I got appointment with Vilasra Deshmu. I didn't know how to go to Balvar Hill at 7:00 PM and return at 9:00 PM. So I was afraid rather. So I requested Aravind Kumar and without slightest hesitation, he offered his car to me. And I use his car right from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM. Similarly, in OCSC Pune, I used his car first time. So very cooperative, very helping. In fact, I am deeply impressed by multiple facets of his personality. My thousand salutes to this gallant personality. So wish you a long life, active life, healthy life, Aravind Kumar sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Prasamayang Oglaapurkar. May I call Prasag Gagan Gupta from NCRT.
Namaste, everybody. I am from National Council of Educational Research and Training. And I still remember first meeting first with Professor Aravind Kumar in 2002. I joined NCRT on 26th of April 2002. And I happened to meet Professor Aravind Kumar on 27th of April morning. And since then, we had a long association. And I am, I am here on behalf of my organization too today. This is 50th year of HBCSE as well. My seniors have told me that the association with HBCSE and NCRT first came up around 1975 or so, when the first set of textbooks for class 9th and 10th came up and Professor Vijay Kulkrani was associated with it. So right from 1975 and then 1988, your sir, your problem set which you set in 1988. And that edition of book was finalized somewhere around 1993 or so on the chairmanship of TV Ramakrishna, I believe, sir. So are still showing light, not only for the children of class 11th and 12th, but also for undergraduate students and also for the competitions, not only for the participants, those who are taking part, but also for the paper setters. And sir, a lot has already been set with this association with NCRT. I remember 2020, when we were in COVID period and we set up a small group where we were having weekly webinars. One fine day, Professor Aravind Kumar phoned me and said that you are doing some job. I also want to be associated with it and give me six months' time to speak on some simple arguments in mathematics. I hope you remember it, sir. So, but later, NCRT, I started a program which is called Listening to Learn. And that program was finally came up on PME Vidya channels, on webinar series. And where this is the new program of NCRT, which has been set up recently. It has been told that nearly 40,000 TV channels are tuned for this program across India. And some of the channels, some of these programs have been telecasted in American TV channels as well. Sir, I have a small souvenir for you and for this program. Hope you will remember this program. And we hope that you'll have a good time and good association once again with NCRT and continuing association with NCRT. And for HBCSE, I must say, long live HBCSE. And we are dependent on HBCSE for many reasons. And we are like our sister organizations, we work hand in hand. Thank you very much.
Lights. Lights here, please. Thank you, Prasag Gupta. May I call Prasag K Subramanyam, former center director of HBCSE.
Thank you, Anvish. Hi AK. It's a great pleasure to be here and to say a few words. I met AK in, I think around about 1993. And he, along with Professor Pradhan, HCP, both of them, and I think they were the main reason for me joining this center. Some of what I say will echo what Professor Pradhan said. But there's a difference. I mean, unlike Professor Pradhan, this is not the place I was looking for. I somehow found this place. It's just because I accidentally met AK and HCP. And not only were they the reason for me joining the place, they were also the reason for me to stay on in this place after having wandered quite a bit. So let me take this opportunity to express my gratitude to AK and also to HCP. I was mentored by HCP, I was supported by other colleagues like Jashri, but I think AK gave the overall ambience and the vision which directed, I think, many of our work, gave it meaning and so on. I'd like to, people of course know about AK's contributions to the Olympiad, to the NIS program, how he built it, founded it and so on. But there are many other things he did to HBCSE and which make what HBCSE, what make HBCSE what it is today. In fact, soon after I joined in 94, within I think three or four months, AK took over as the center director. So my period, kind of initial years, coincided with his taking over. And in the initial years, I think his concern was, as I understand it, to give sort of a solid basis of understanding of science for all our programs, equity programs. So there was this, there was these fairly strange sessions which AK conceived of, which were called reading sessions, where we would sit and we would read basic books and science. Of course, not textbooks, but say Asimov's Guide to Science, I think was something that we all read together. And those were days where we were soaked in not only science, but also on things like history and philosophy of science. AK took a great interest in the nature of science and its implications for science education. I'll come to that a little later. So I think his concern was, he invented this phrase, I think, equity and excellence. And I think it precedes the Olympiad program, if I am not mistaken. And so I think his concern was that there should be excellence in all aspects of work. These are not different dimensions or different kinds of programs at HBCSE, but that equity and excellence must underlie all these programs. So his concern was to bring deep physics understanding to every student. Explains his involvement in NCRT textbooks which go out to the masses. He was equally interested and took a lot of, he gave a lot of support for equity programs like the Ashram Schools program, went there, interacted with teachers, took teacher training sessions. In fact, that's where I first saw AK in action, talking to Ashram School teachers. I'd like to also recall some landmark steps in making HBCSE what it is today. Of course, I think the initial period was this building this basic understanding of science among the whole of HBCSE community. But soon after that, I think it, at some point, it became a national center of the TIFR. I don't remember the history of that, but I assume it was through AK's efforts. But what I do know is that there was a very important and momentous step which I think AK took perhaps with support from other colleagues to convert, to create a faculty of science education in the center. I think till then, there was no faculty of science education in TIFR. And so this was a new interdisciplinary faculty. And I think he conceived of that vision and making research in science education very central to that vision and set up this faculty. So soon after that, in a few years, when the graduate school at TIFR, TIFR became a deemed university and a graduate school was put on sound foundation, science education was a separate subject. It had its own subject board and was given, you know, full place along with physics, chemistry, biology, computer science and mathematics in TIFR. Because the initial years, I think, we were all not very sure of the status of science education research. I think the center was still finding its foothold in how it should intervene in the larger education and science education space. But I think in, very quickly, AK recognized the importance of science education research. And part of it was establishing this faculty, starting a strong graduate school and supporting other colleagues like Jashri Ramdas in many exciting things which were happening at that time, which were led by these colleagues. One of the first things I remember in the center was the workshop on cognitive basis of learning. I mean, it was very exciting for me coming from a kind of interdisciplinary training background. Of course, there was, people have mentioned the Omibaba curriculum, the Olympiads and so on. And I thought I should mention this, the creation of the faculty of science education and setting up the graduate school. He also supported and actually, I should say initiated, the epistomy series of conferences. The first one was held in Goa in 2004. And since then, I think it's been held very regularly. It's become a landmark, it's become a main platform for sharing science education, both research and development work. So just before this morning, I read one of your pieces, AK, on the nature of science. I think it was written fairly recently. And it struck me that it's, I mean, the clarity with which AK writes about these things is very striking. So in this firstly argues about the importance of nature of science for science education. Of course, this comes because of his deep interest in history and philosophy of science, which was there, I think, from his very early years in HBCSE. And he, after making this argument that it's important, he looks at two ways in which this is done. One is through inquiry-based science learning, which is a kind of buzzword for several decades now. It's a paradigm of science teaching and learning. And another, he says, is through the history of science. And he proposes both of these could be tried out. But he's also skeptical object and as people mentioned, very objective, critical in. So he says that the evidence is not there to show that either of these actually work, but they should be tried out. And I think that's very instructive and of the kind of, the way AK approaches things. Also, for me, what is very striking and in a way inspiring is that he takes these big ideas from many fields and sees its interpretation and relevance for science education. I think that's one of his main tasks. And also his involvement in physics education research. I mean, continues to this day. And even here, I think he draws from the early days where he worked on alternative conceptions. He's gone on to look at epistemology of physics and physics learning and how that plays a role in, you know, things which every physics student experiences in college. Things like derivations in physics. And I think it's a very nice research project that they've set up. So it's been altogether wonderful to know AK, to know AK. So it's been altogether wonderful to know AK, to know about his work and to learn from him and to work in this center, which was led by him for many years. I wish him continuing fruitful and productive life and health and many more years. I hope to see you again after some years here. Thank you, AK.
Thank you, Professor Subramaniam. Professor Savita Largi, Dean, HBCSE.
So before I start saying something about AK, in response to Vijay Singh, it was Copenhagen, Denmark, where we had mom chel failed on my shoulder about 33rd host, I mean we are going to host the 33rd ICHO. That's one thing. And I think historically, if the physicists and the chemists work together, often they lead to a fruitful, you know, collaboration. History shows that, okay? So 33rd ICHO is one such example, where the group of chemists and, you know, led by a physics person, we work together. And historically, if you look at the history of Indian Science Olympiad, it's one of the milestone, you know? I mean it is one of the event which basically led to rigorous standardization of the Olympiad program in India. It gave boost to several things and that is something unique. And just to let audience know, we have 50 years of HBCSE, but this year we are also celebrating, kind of it coincides, it's 25 years of the Science Olympiad program. In fact, next year, I mean physics completed this year, the chemistry will be completing next year and next to next year, the biology will be, so it's a very nice coincidence. We have 80th birthday of AK, we have 50th, you know, year golden jubilee for HBCSE and we have a silver jubilee for the Science Olympiad. So I thought I'll just mention that, just for the benefit of the audience here actually. Sir, let me wish you a very healthy life ahead. And I certainly look forward to interact with in many more years to come. I have gained significantly from my interactions with AK. And what I will do is that I will try to say things which have not been said till now, because a lot has been said. So actually, my interaction with AK started when the Science Olympiad program started. Before that, I was kind of a student and to be very frank, I was very scared of AK. In fact, I used to avoid going to him and I always used to go to Professor Pradhan because I felt it was much easier to put my arguments. And I think there were occasions where I took Professor Pradhan to accompany me to AK's room so that, you know, I say what I can say. And I used to rehearse my argument, you know? I literally used to rehearse my argument before I go to AK's room because I was not sure what question I will get and whether I will have answer. It was like an exam, you know, going to a. So basically, but of course, when we started interacting, you know, because of the Olympiad program, slowly, you know, I understood him better and then we had real good interactions. So what I will say is that this event, 33rd ICHO, in fact, helped HBCSE to grow. It helped all the individuals and Subhan, you will agree with me actually, that it helped all individuals from HBCSE to grow. It was a first major international event which was successfully hosted by HBCSE, okay? And what this event really helped us with, okay? So all HBCSE, all sections of HBCSE basically experienced for the first, they got firsthand experiences about how to do meticulous planning, detailing, okay? How to think about backup plans, okay, and be ready with it? How to be patient when we are supposed to handle complex situations on behalf of HBCSE? And it also, you know, kind of indirectly, we all understood that our actions communicate impressions about HBCSE and it is so very important to be responsible because you are kind of representing HBCSE to the people and in this case, it was the international audience. So that is something all of us, whosoever is there, we learned when the 33rd international, Chemistry International Olympiad happened. Everybody has spoken about AK and all of us know AK always thrives for excellence and it, he values it the most. Whatever you do, whatever small things you do, it's very important that you excel, okay? And that is something throughout his life, he has followed and he also expect, he doesn't say, but he expects that this should be done. And this is, you know, this comes across any of his activities. There are many activities which have been mentioned, whether it is a study circle in the physics or whether it's Olympiad camp or whether it is NUS program or whether it is epistomy. So basically, you should really excel. And the only way to excel is do hard work. I still remember as a research scholar, one day, we used to go to Dhanu tribal region and we used to have lots of school visits, which used to start 6:30 in the, in the morning. And by that time, we used to back, it was 8pm. And after that, we were supposed to fill all the perform, only one single day. We asked Professor Arvind Kumar, sir, we want five to 10 minutes break. And he said, nothing doing, you people are research scholars, you are supposed to work for 24 hours a day, hard work doesn't kill anybody. And then me and Sugra both were very angry, why this person doesn't understand that we just require some break? But, but now I understand and I really know the value of hard work. And sir, we have tried to do that in the kind of activities which we have. I don't, I'm not going to claim that we are anywhere close to the kind of work which you are put, I mean you are still putting, but that is something which we have learned, you know? Ks just mentioned about his, his major contribution for establishing the PhD School in Science Education, especially when TIFR became the Dean University. There also what I, what really, I mean even today, I find it quite, I mean I have taken over as dean and I don't know how he managed his time. I always saw if he wants to learn anything, he used to go and attend, okay? All the graduate courses, he will make sure that he goes and attend. He contributes, he has solid discussions and I really don't know how you manage time with the responsibility of the Center Directorship. And that is something, other thing which I have learned, that if you have to learn something, it doesn't matter, you have to be in it actually and you have to go and really do hard work. That is how you will gain knowledge or whatever. So that's another thing which I have, you see? The most important thing about AK is that he always valued academic freedom, okay? He really respected that and he gave freedom to his colleagues. He never stopped any individual from doing what they wanted to do. There were a difference of opinion, okay? I mean it was not that there were not any difference, but that is, he never stopped anybody and it's really important to understand this and respect the people's space and, you know, the kind of academic freedom they have. Now, one thing which I would like to say throughout his activities, especially about the Olympiad and NUS and all that, I think what AK has tried to do is to make efforts to bring people from scientific community, that is people who are engaged with the research domain of, research domain, then teachers who are people and the stakeholders who are engaged with teaching and learning process and young students, okay, who will take careers together on a platform for a fruitful interactions. And I think in Indian context where there are, I mean these stakeholders do not generally meet each other, this kind of, this effort or, you know, having this kind of a forum, whether it is due to Olympiad or whether it is due to NUS and right now, we are having a VP program where also this effort is going on. This is so very important. And why it is important? Because I think all these stakeholders will understand each other. They will understand the difficulties, the plus minuses. And I think together, they will come up with the solutions which are viable. And those solutions are so very important for science education within India. So thanks a lot, sir, for the same thing. Wishing you a healthy life again.
Thank you, Professor Largi. Professor Vandana Narayan from TIFR.
It's a proud honor and pleasure to be here today. And I stand here as a student of Professor Arvind Kumar. You all heard about study circle, many times it was mentioned. So I had a privilege to be part of the study circle from 84 to 86. I think ours was probably the first batch. I still remember when he was starting it, I think he went around to different colleges. So I was studying in Ruparil College and he came and gave a lecture. It was a mesmerizing lecture. It was the first time, I think at least I felt that what you can see in physics beyond the textbook. And that motivated us and many others to join the study circle. The study circle was really a turning point and a life-changing experience. We learnt about, we used to go there every Thursday in Nana Chowk, in municipality school there, which was there. And tentatively, it will start around 3 and supposed to go on till 6, 6:30, but there were days it went till 7:30, if I recall correctly. And nobody looked at time. It was really a pleasure and it was a completely different way of looking at things. He started that time with quantum mechanics. It was mostly, I think, Beizer's modern physics which you're following and learning about quantum mechanics. And I'm really indebted to you because that sort of showed us that what the research can be and I'm sure like me, many other people felt the same. Almost after 36 years, 3 tapan anta, I had an opportunity again to attend his quantum mechanics lectures as a part of Vighyan vidushy course in 2020. So this is the TIFR HBCSE Summer School Program which we started. And on the very first year, we were, we had to have it online. We were all daunted by teaching online. But Professor Arvind Kumar was maybe a bit hesitant initially, but when he started teaching, it was, he was completely on board with online teaching and it was again a realization of his great teaching skills. And all the students' feedbacks over the years also, when you will, you will see, it's unanimously that how fortunate they are to be taught by him. So really, thanks for that. I must also add in Vighyan vidushy, since the program was online, the interactions were virtual. So we had this question-answer forum for students to write the questions and teachers will answer it. And among all the teachers, the one teacher who answered all the questions in detail, I don't have to tell name, it was Professor Arvind Kumar doing that. It's in line with all the things which have been said about him. There's also one more incident I remember in the first day in the informal interaction. Some students said that I can't understand English, can you talk in Hindi? Many of us would have said, it's not possible, it is there, how many students have this problem? He just said, okay, I understand, I will try to do as much as possible in Hindi. And he did in his lectures, tried to bring in Hindi. I mean this approach again is very, very characteristic of him. And many students will vouch for this. I don't have much more to add, but since Sir Rangola mentioned his passion for films, I will add something which is not mentioned, but many of you will know, he is a father of an actor. His son acted in late 70s, there was a very famous Marathi serial Chimandra Gundeabho. His son has done the role of Chimandra's son in that. So that's also his another thing. So thank you very much for all that you taught us and wish you a very happy life ahead.
Thank you, Professor Narayan. Professor Ravi Bhattacharya.
Thank you, AK. We have heard a lot about you, learnt a lot about you today. But I am here to express my personal gratitude for having met you, which was a very decisive moment in my career and it changed the way that I worked. And let me be a little bit more explicit. I had come in sometime in February 1998 to conduct a workshop on low-cost instruments in the chemistry department invited by Professor S. Agarwal. And in the valedictory function, we were having tea and I met, I mean Professor, he was the Center Director, obviously we are having tea with the Center Director. And he asked me, what do you teach? And I said, right now I'm teaching quantum mechanics and electricity magnetism, electrodynamics. I said, why don't you come for the Olympiad program? I didn't know anything about the Olympiad program, right? Out of the blue, he told, says that to me and ever since that, my career has changed. Because 1998, when we started all this program, as Vijay pointed out, making these thematic problems was itself a research. I spent most of my time, you know, apart from teaching and things like that, researching on how to make good, real good thematic problem. So, and I remember that on those good old days, the resource generation camps were a handful of people. It was a very small club and we met in Professor Arvind Kumar's room, AK's room upstairs. Two days of grueling things, challenging problems and, you know, being very careful that the problem is good enough so that AK really, you know, does not crush it down, okay? So, but the best part of it was after the two grueling days of RGC, okay? It was a nice evening in, what was it called, invitation, right? Ah, celebration. It was a nice evening in celebration. Celebration no longer exists, it's called Mama's, Grandma's Cafe. And I make it a point to go to Grandma's Cafe for the sake of old times, every time in Bombay. So thank you again, AK. Thank you very much for getting me into this problem, into this program. Well, that's called a slip of the tongue, right? Doesn't mean much. But getting into this program and ever since 1998, I have been here and still trying to make some challenging problems. Thank you again, AK.
Thank you, Professor Bhattacharya. So of course, I think it's getting quite late and everybody is waiting to hear from Professor Arvind Kumar. But if anybody else would like to say within one or two minutes, anything? Okay, otherwise, I would invite Professor Arvind Kumar to say a few words, whatever. And we will end the program with that. So we'll put a chair for you, shall we put a chair for you? That will be better, yeah. They'll bring in a chair, yeah, but you can come, please. Yeah, please.
I'll sit here. Just to put a caller mic. Yeah.
Can you switch this off and put a caller mic?
It's scary. Hello, so you can hear me? First of all, thank you, Anvish, Mashud and Arnav for organizing this wonderful symposium and the felicitation function at the end. First of all, greetings and thanks to all the participants and speakers of this symposium, this three-day symposium, which unfortunately I could not attend. So thank you all the speakers at the symposium. For this afternoon session, of course, I am very grateful to all the speakers. So many of them distinguished speakers and all of them distinguished, but some of them are very close friends and colleagues for giving me compliments and tributes. I enjoyed many of them very much. And I really do not know how to respond to those numerous tributes. So all I can accept, I can do is to assume that those tributes were more a matter of affection than, than anything very substantially true. that those tributes were more a matter of affection than, than anything very substantially true. So, and, but whatever it is, I accept all the tributes in all my humility. On this occasion, I want to thank the numerous people in my life who have guided and supported me throughout the various stages. I have now completed eight decades of life, so. So through the various decades of my life, I would like to thank, of course, I will not start from all over the beginning. This is going to be a very long list. So for lack of time and because of the fact that some names may not relate to you, I'll be trimming that list and I'll, I'll be reducing it. In this process of trimming it, I might omit some names just out of memory loss, I might, might have just forgotten. So before I start, my apologies for any inadvertent omissions. But before I give you that list of people whom I want to express my gratitude to, I, I just want to say a few remarks. Now, well, as the, you know, all the wise people in the world have always said that our life is a product of chance and necessities. I think it's quite a famous phrase, "Chance and necessity." What is this? I mean, something happens to us by chance and then we, our life takes a certain trajectory. Another chance happens on that trajectory. There are many branches to the trajectories, but one chance and you get along another branch of the trajectory. Yet another chance, yet another branch of the trajectory. I think it's current complexity theory, if I understand it right, of physics, that is what sometimes say that there are bifurcations happening, etc. The analogy is not perfect, but that's something like that. And then those bifurcations, it's more chance than anything you. Once you are on the trajectory, of course, the necessary laws of nature take you over. So like anybody else, my life also has been a product of numerous chances and necessities. So many that obviously I cannot recount all of them here. But I want to recount just two chances of my life. One right at the beginning of my life, when I was a school student. And one right in the end of, very near the end of my career. At school, I was immensely fond of languages. Hindi, in our time in Delhi, of course, there was no Marathi there. It was Hindi, English and Sanskrit. I was very passionately fond. I was actually fond of nothing else but those languages. But unfortunately for me, for some reason, I do not know, I also scored well in science and maths. I said unfortunately because once you score well in science and maths, the writing is on the wall, I mean, in the family. So my father dismissed any fancy ideas of my going to the other branch and said, "No, nothing doing, you have to do, you have to do science." These are very old times, fifty years, there was no such thing that asking, asking your words, what you want to do, etc. Those concepts didn't exist in those, in those times. So I had to, if you know about Delhi system, you had to do these branching rather early in my life, in your life. It's not after tenth, it used to be little earlier. Those were the times of Delhi higher secondary school, so-called. Anyway, I mean, if, for example, if chance had taken me to the other branch, all things being equal, this function might have been held in department of Hindi, Sanskrit or, or English of Hansraj College or some such college in Delhi. So how important is this chance? You know, the whole, whole life changes. Anyway, it didn't happen. I branched to science and here I am, the so-called physics educationist, etc., etc. That was one chance. I'll now fast forward because to fifty years later, this first chance was, must have been nineteen fifty-three or so, or fifty-five, something like that. The second chance.
Can you take off your phone? Creating some, say phone, mobile phone. Your mobile phone, can you take it out, creating some disturbance?
Mobile phone?
Yeah.
Escape, yeah. Fast forward fifty years. I think it was around two thousand three. HBCSE was in full swing, you know, Olympiads, conferences, as Ravi said, you know, the graduate school, the various courses in science education, Olympiads. Everything was in full swing. There didn't have to be any chance occurrence. I mean, it could have, it could have just gone on. But I remember that day distinctly. One day, I was sitting in Professor Shobo Bhattacharya, then, then director TIFR. His room, you know, for some HBCSE routine matters. HBCSE director often goes there every month or two, just to brief the director TIFR. I got finished with those routine matters and then he, he said, he, he stopped me and he said, "Arvind, I want to say something to you." I said, "What?" He said, "Arvind, I'm getting a feeling in the scientific and educational circles in India that something is to be done at the undergraduate stage." We have these very first-rate premier institutes in the country for higher level, graduate schools and so on. Some of the top, TIFR itself being one, but, but many other, IASC, IITs and so on. There are excellent graduate schools. Also, lot of work is being done by NCRT on higher secondary. And now you have also started something at that level, the Olympiads, etc., etc. But there is something missing at the undergraduate level, a substantial thing. Of course, there have always been some efforts, but some very substantial thing needs to be done at the UG level. And he said it quite, this was, it's not casual remark, it's quite serious. And he said, "Why don't you think about it?" So I said, "Okay, I will think about it." I came back. More as usual, brought me back to HBCSE. And his remarks started, set me thinking as to what to do. It was clear that I had to do something. And as somebody pointed out, I think, Anvesh or somebody else, that once I get an idea, then until that idea gets out of mind and gets translated into something, I just cannot rest. So there was one or probably two weeks of intense thinking, sometimes consulting Prasapradhan, but usually I was thinking on my own. And the only person who knew was Subhanah, who knew that this, this guy is thinking about something. And in those days, there was no, at least I was not very, you know, so familiar with computer typing and so on. So my style was paper writing, so on. I spent ten days drafting up the NIUS proposal and then of course I asked her to type it out, etc. So that's part of the chance, that somebody triggering me to do that. But you can always write a highly great sounding proposal. Writing a proposal is no big deal, it's the easy part of it. HBCSE is very fortunate that the proposal, as soon as it was known to director TIFR, anyway, he had regarded it, so he liked it. But the then decision-maker, Professor Kakadkar, actually, when I was writing that proposal, I thought, am I daydreaming or what? Because it, it was quite a substantial proposal, inviting, you know, asking for buildings and this and that. And it's not an easy job to ask government. And it was mid, mid, midterm plan. So it's not easy to get money, let alone infrastructure, etc. Anyway, to the great chance, chairman D, D not only liked the proposal, I mean, or approved the proposal, those are very small words. He got so enthused about it, which actually surprised me. I mean, he's, yeah, I was very happy approving it, but he was proactively excited about it, just as I was excited in writing it. So, I mean, Professor Shobo had caught the right, right vibrations going on in the government of India. You know, the TIFR director goes to various, is always in APEX committees. So the director knows what, what is the feeling. That was, this feeling, four years later, was to translate into these big things called ISRs, NISRs, etc. It was just this feeling that undergraduate level, something had to be done. But this was four years ago. That is, that was the chance. If this had come seven years, HBCSE would not have got this proposal. It came four years earlier. That time, there was a vacuum and NIUS filled that vacuum thanks to the tremendous support of Dr. Kakadkar. So NIUS is a product of two chances. One, an important person triggering it. The other, of course, the most vital, important person in the chain, feeling not only supportive about it, but proactively taking it forward and getting it, getting it done. So these are the chances I, I wanted to say, there are many others I. Of course, as somebody pointed out, once the NIUS and their earlier Olympiads gave HBCSE new infrastructure, then of course, it was open for all programs. It doesn't restrict to the infrastructure. Twenty years from now, maybe or thirty years from now, NIUS may take some other shape. Olympiads may take some other shape, but the buildings will still be there. And they can always, we can, one can think of. So it, it will, it's all to the imagination of HBCSE new generation, how to make use of that. For example, the latest Vighyan vidushy, which somebody, Naanul, pointed out. We, we did not think when NIUS, Vighyan vidushy program, but it came and it, the NIUS infrastructure is just the right structure for Vighyan vidushy. Also because of the labs, the labs, we got the labs which are advanced and so on. And that is what I meant by saying that life or institution's life itself is a product of chance and necessity. I think I can go on and on on this theme of chance and necessity. So let me, just before I close, no words are adequate to thank Professor Shobo Bhattacharya and Dr. Kakadkar for, for what they have done to HBCSE. I, I was only talking of chance, I'm not talking of HBCSE, all activities, etc. They are of course, very nice spectrum of activities on equity and excellence and all that. But this is not the occasion to talk of. Now I come back to thanking people, expressing my attitude. Then since there are too many, I have to make some criteria. The best criteria is Indian tradition. First, pay respects to the elders and then come to colleagues and so on. I am grateful to Professor Virin Singh, my, and I'll start from TIFR days, otherwise it can take any time. So I'll start from TIFR early days. I am grateful to Professor Virin Singh, my PhD guide, Professor Uddgavkar, my mentor. But there were many other colleagues, senior colleagues, Prasal K Pandit, Prasain Mukunda, Raj Shekran, SS Jha, DP Roy and SM Roy and several others, I might be forgetting some names. It is these people from whom I learned theoretical physics. Of course, the, all of these that I named, they have become giants in their own fields, etc. But I picked up what modern, you know, science education people call the epistemology. The epistemology of theoretical, I didn't do great theoretical physics, but I got the epistemology of theoretical physics. What is, what is done in theoretical physics? What do you mean by doing research in theoretical physics? That is called epistemology and these epistemic inputs are more, most important. I got these from them, but I was into teaching because that was my, for whatever reasons, the basic impulse. I went to UDP. UDP, the elders, there were not too many, so there weren't too many elders or youngsters, etc. Professor MC Zoshi, I would like to pay my respectful tributes to him. And of course, Professor Abbas Rangwal, who was my elder there and from whom, over ten years, I learned. who was my elder there and from whom, over ten years, I learned too many things to enumerate. And this was a different kind of learning because theoretical physics research is a different thing. Here also we are doing research, but our main job was teaching. So, I mean, you know, going after, working out one textbook after another, fortunately, another chance. Professor Rangwal has the same temperament as me, namely that we all both like teaching and we all both working out in detail and, you know, giving long, long classes, it's, we coincide, I mean, we have, it's again a chance because sometimes what happens in some faculties, you get a course and then they, then you have to just do that course, all your high, because people have, people have sort of, you know, fixed their courses and you can't do. But in this university, one year I would teach quantum, next year Abbas would teach, next year I would teach electrodynamics, next year he would teach. This was a fantastic experience. Why I call my UDP experience is because of this. If I were to teach only one subject for eleven years, that would not have been fun and educative, because after two, three years you get bold, are bold by that course and you just teach what you already know. But this was one course after another, so there was some, then, all the core courses, name any core course, we both taught, name any topical course except for one or two. I still miss solid-state physics because that had got sort of controlled by somewhere, so I, we didn't get it. I wish I had a portion, teach solid-state physics and electronics anyway is my weak point, so I didn't teach that. But apart from that, I'm nuclear physics, what did I have to do? I mean, I had, I was a particle physicist, nuclear physics is altogether a different discipline. But here was this dishelated flashback and we pored over it, every page of it, taught it for two years and then atomic and molecular physics, then laser physics, all sorts of things. So I think it was enormously useful and I'm grateful to Professor Abbas, who was my compatriot in this learning. I move on to, there's also Chetan Mehta, I just want to remember him, he was also one of the people. I come to Homi Bava Centre quickly, as far as the elders are concerned, it's Professor Vijay, Vijay Kulkarni, Uddgavkar, Professor Lagu, Professor Bhagwat. Otherwise, the rest of them are all younger than me, so I can't say that I was the eldest there. So, these are Homi Bava Centre people. And then CBS again, I met Professor Chhatre, who was definitely senior and I want to pay my respectful tributes to him. And Professor Hosur Mathur, although they are younger, in the role they were bigger, they were directors of the Centre for Basic Sciences. Mathur and the current director, Dr. Jain, etc. I'm very grateful to them that they are, they're very courteous to me and so on. I come back to my fourteen years of centre directorship at Homi Bava Centre. See, first of all, I'll tell you that HBCAC thinks won't go smooth unless the HBCAC director has good contacts with TIFR directors. I was extremely fortunate in having excellent rapport, almost friendly with TIFR directors, starting from Professor Virin Singh, who was anyway my guide, Professor Jha, who might be director, but actually was my old friend at TIFR. Yeah. Then Professor Shobo, I have already mentioned. And then, after Professor Shobo, who was that? Professor Mustansin Burma, yeah, Shobo was 2002, 2003. Although I was there only for a year with Mustansin Burma, he was also very great, I'm grateful to all of them. But not only when I was there as a centre director, after my directorship, I had nothing to do with TIFR directors after I retired, but sometimes one does go to TIFR. And I have always got extremely good kindness and courtesy by the succeeding, successive directors after Mustansin, of course Ramke and Sandeep Trivedi and of course the current director. I was very honoured that he came to this function. He's very recent and I have talked to him only twice, but two or three, on this few occasions I talk, he is extremely courteous to me, so I thank them all very much. I should express my deep gratitude to Dr. Chidambaram. Dr. Kakadkar, I have said, there was another person, Dr. Ramarao, who for some reasons had taken a liking for me and then the proposals with BRNS, it's all used to when, go through so smoothly, there was never any problem. I come back to my junior centre director. Of course, Professor Pradhana and Professor Vijay Singh were my, you know, the dean as well as, Vijay Singh came a little later, but nevertheless, he was national. It is these people who ran the centre, I was only there nominally and I am very grateful to them to take so much of responsibility. People, somebody told me, "How could I do this?" or "I could do..." I could do this because these two people were there, etc. I must acknowledge administrative support of P.R. Fadnavis and Madhavi Laiton. I believe that although maybe not TIFR philosophy, at least HBCAC is a very close-knit institution. There is not much difference between academic, scientific and this, there is no difference, which is a very, an extremely good feature of HBCAC. So P.R. Fadnavis and and our important, most important person, I used to call him of the centre, P.P. Rawal, that because without his signature, nothing can happen. So our accountant, P.P. Rawal, they were very kind to me and they. This is about management, but academically also, I learned a great deal from, of course, my colleague Pradhana, who is a very, very capable person in many, many different fields, including maths and physics and so many things. He's a real broad general scholar and there's so much to learn from him. But I learned from my younger colleagues. I, starting from Agarka Gambhir and even Gaisas, when we used to go for trips. Shrisparvee, he was younger, I so regretted that he left the centre, but after many years I saw him, I was so glad. Jayashri, who actually introduced me to physics education research. Sugra, who gave different dimensions. These social dimensions, I did not bother during my UDP period, I was not into these social dimensions, but she made me aware of these dimensions. Subramanyam and Nagarjuna, Chitra, BS Mahajan, Jotsana, Rajesh. All of these I learned, I mean, because it has been such a long, it was a long period of fourteen years and I was interacting sometime or the other with all of them, etc. So I learned a great deal. You can only say that I'm a good student, I mean, I pick up, if somebody tells me, I try to learn it. I want to particularly acknowledge KS, is he there? Okay, Sophia, Subramanyam and Nagarjuna, I think is not there. These people oriented me into philosophy of science. So now I doubt myself as a philosopher of science of sorts. Actually, I am, my main roots are only in physics. But I really got, I think my intellectual enrichment was much strengthened because of KS and Jain, because I learned what is it, just as I told you, one has to learn what is it that is called theoretical physics. Similarly, what is it that is called philosophy of science? People have naive ideas about what it all means. So from that naive to something more subtle, not as subtle as they know it, but I got to know philosophy. To the extent I had the courage to even give a course on philosophy of science. So that's my usual technique, if I want to work hard, then I just take up that subject. So philosophy of science, learning theories, cognitive development, education, etc. These are not my topics at all, I've never been trained in these topics. But I said, "Why not?" I mean, just, let's just, there are some very good colleagues here, let me and the usual, my usual pattern, take a book and just, just read it, read it, read it. And that's how I learned some of these things. I'm very, very happy that I am not a typical hard-nosed physicist, which I would have remained if I was only in the physics field. But my hard-nosed physics, correct sort of broaden to include these very intellectual horizons of behavioural science, which I must say, most scientists are not aware of. And so I'm very happy and I'm very privileged to be, yeah. Rekha, I don't know if she's there, I had really, are you there, Rekha? Yeah, yeah, thanks, yeah. I mean, I have a very special report for God reasons, what reason, of reasons, but I had a very special report. I used to discuss with her, though I don't know any, that is one subject I have, I still could not master. Not only master, I could not, I did not know that. Vijay Singh has been talking about it, I think it has been one of the most exciting periods of my life, the most cherished period, if I want to reminisce about my academic things. And that was those nine, few years of 1998 to 2001. Later Olympiads became a pain and then too much of this thing. But those three, four years, it was not so much pain and it was just, you know, designing problems, designing the problems. He related very nice incidents about it, etc. But I, Vijay Singh and occasionally Sanjay, Sunil Datta, yeah, yeah, but mostly two of us. The excitement of, it was almost as novel as doing research, I would say even better than that. Because doing research, you have a, you have pressure whether you'll, somebody will publish it or not and all sorts of pressures. But this Olympiad designing problem is the most blissful activity because it's very challenging, very demanding, it knows, it needs lot of subject expertise, if you don't have, you have to read it and then you have to design it in such a manner, not only, it is very demanding, it is also accessible. These requirements are not simple requirement. People underestimate the importance, the time that is needed for Olympiad design. It's not that you formulate a problem, these are the brightest people on the planet. And how do you, you can't have a standard problem. IITJ problem is no model for Olympiad problems. It's of a different kind. You have to design it, but you can't go outside the syllabus. It's very easy to design very difficult problems, take up a book of Jackson and write down a problem, it's not that way. The technique we found was, read Jackson, read Schiff, read reactor physics, read this, read that and water it down. That was, now I'm giving you the trade secret of how to design Olympiad problem. So, so the Dirac monopoly problem was that way. We first read the sections from, but you cannot write Dirac, Dirac is a graduate level, sorry, Jackson is a graduate level book. How to bring it down here? The other requirement, it should be accessible. You know, it should be examinable, there should be clear-cut marks and so on. This is a fantastic exercise, provided there's not too much stress on it and now, I'm told nowadays it's very stressful, etc. But we, we found this period stress-free and the most academically interesting period of my life. So thanks Vijay for that very happy period, the most, the period I cherish most in my life. Anyway, there are many other, in my naming all the individuals, I must have, I'm sure I have forgotten many, many people, please forgive me. I don't mean to ignore anybody, but just some names might have gone. Some new, very bright people have come to the centre, I have not had much interaction, Ankush, Deepa, Sanjay, Sanjay is one person, I don't know if he's there, but he's fantastic, his depth of cognitive science is incredible. And whenever I listen to him, whatever he says, I find this is something, oh, this is not something trivial, this is something a kuch, banda kuch, but subtle boraai kuch, that sort of thing that I got from Sanjay. I don't know if he's there. So these are my academic, I'm going to my younger colleagues in a moment, I mean. But before that, let me formally also thank the succeeding centre directors, deans, etc. It's a formality, but I must go through Professor Pradhana, Ramdas, Subramanyam and now, I don't need to be formal, but Arunab, you are the director and I should thank you for for all the courtesy that post-retirement I'm getting and all the deans later, Jayashri Ramdas, Chitra Natrajyan and then Sugra Chanavala and Savitala Atge, etc. So my formal thanks for, when I come now, post-retirement to HBCAC, I'm so warmly welcomed, so thank you all very much. And of course, the centre directors, I'm sorry, the national coordinators. I shouldn't take Anvesh, I mean, the centre, he's quite an important person now in this, but because of his, because of the age, I forget it sometimes and so these national coordinators, Professor Vijay Singh and Professor Anvesh Azhumdar. So all the centre directors, deans and national coordinator post-my-retirement, thank you all very much. I also want to thank Prithvija Sehna, if he's there. He is now the national coordinator at Olympiad. So he is also very nice to me when I come here. Now, one organization, I'll just go outside. I'll just, I'll just spend just two more, I mean, ten, five, ten minutes more. One organization that works hand-in-hand with HBCSE is IAPT. And I thank Professor Dharkar. Professor Dharkar sadly no more. Professor Ogla Purkar, Professor Alu Alia. And there have been numerous IAPT members. And I'm very glad. Without IAPT, HBCSE alone cannot do the Olympiads. It's IAPT, HBCSE effort. And that's the way it has been going also. Thanks you, all IAPT members, all of them. I may not take their names, but thank you all very much. Also, there was Dr. Prabhu of Indian Association of Chemistry Teachers at Professor Satyamurti mentioned. Dr. Kali, Indian Association of, they have been named something else. But I call them Indian Association of Biology Teachers, Dr. Kali and so on. And with these chemistry and bio Olympiads, I came to know some very distinguished people who are not physicists, but chemists and biologists. So that's like, there's another great advantage of being at HBCSE. Because otherwise in physics, you just remain with physicists, etc. You don't even know. Professor Satyamurti, Professor Gadre, Professor Uday Maitra. They were all members of the International Chemistry and. Professor Madan Chaturvedi is a very capable person. And it has been a great fortune of HBCSE that such brilliant people have also found it interesting to come to HBCSE. And they are giants in their own fields. But they come to HBCSE and, and all this Olympiad problem solving or international bio Olympiads. So I have come in contact with some of them. So my gratitude to all of them, all these people. Now I, I want to say that of most, my most special mention is Rajaram Nityanand. I had known, his fame had traveled before, traveled to me before I saw him. I had known from 1980s or something that there is a guy at Ramand Research Institute. He is really, really good. I had heard this, but I did not have the fortune to have seen him. But eventually I saw him in CRT books and then this astronomy Olympiads and etc. And, well, I, I cannot tell you what he is. And Rajaram is my role model in, as far as physics is concerned. You know, great physicists, they don't look different. They are, they are something similar. So he may look like one, all of us, but he's a great physicist. His, his knowledge of physics, I mean, people are appreciating me in this. That's all just textbook. But the real depth, you know, it's, it's difficult to describe what that is. So I won't like to try it. His depth and breadth of understanding of physics and the facility with which he goes from one subject to another and so on. I can only aspire. And in the remaining years that I have, I, I'm just trying to see if, if I can be, you know, it's the mathematical notion of limit, can I approach? Approach that or? So thank you Rajaram. And not only for, of course, that is, that's great, but also being very, very cooperative and very nice to me during the astronomy Olympiad. And your friendship, I mean, he's, he became my friend for many years. And so it's one of my cherished achievements of life to have, have been friendly with Rajaram. Returning to the astronomy Olympiad, we had a, see, what happens is this astronomy thing. Astrophysics, I can possibly manage, but this business of observational astronomy is something, is I am not too good at it. Not too good, not good at all, but so observational astronomy. And when this Olympiad was happening, I was looking for some person to help me because I could not have kept on on this. And Professor Vahia was there, but he's in TIFR and, but I, I always like to keep things under my thing. If, if I am in the Committee for Astronomy Olympiad, I should know it properly. And I was finding it hard. So it was a godsend for me. This very young and trend, at that time very young and even now very young, Aniket Suley. He came just, it was real godsend. I was looking for it, I was getting tense and there was Aniket Suley right in front of the desk. He said, I said, where are you? I mean, he said, no, I just returned from Germany. I think he did his PhD in Germany, he was there. And I knew from his early experience that he is a bright boy. I said, just come along, you have to be part of HBCSE. And that's why Aniket, it's Aniket Suley who saved me from international astronomy Olympiad. And of course, Professor Vahia has always been there. Vahia is not just about astronomy Olympiad. Vahia has been my friend from 1970s. He was one of the students who would come and gossip with professors. Generally, generally professors gossip among themselves, our students gossip among themselves. But here is a guy who would come to Abbas' room and I would be there and he would be gossiping with us. So he has been friend since then. Where is Vahia? And he is, he is very good in a variety of fields. And we have been often wanting to work together, but he is just, he's just too busy. A man like that is just too busy with this and that. We have been wanting to write a, write book and so on, but time passed, the pandemic came and so on. It was before the pandemic, we were thinking of writing something. The, what was it? The glimpses of sign, no, flavor of, flavor of science. But unfortunately, that flavor remained, you know, unimplemented, etc. But anyway, thanks Vahia. And Vahia has, has been not only my friend, has been a friend of HBCSE. You have any HBCSE program, conference, Goa Conference, he is there to help you set up. So he's a sort of quasi-HBCSE person. No, I'm not sure where he exactly belonged. Did he belong to TIFR or was it HBC, what that is? So thanks Vahia for, and for your recent invitation last year for this summarizing. That by the way was quite painful because I took, took three months to review HBCSE. I mean, that was too late, time for me to do, but for his sake, I did that. Okay, so thanks Vahia. Paresh Soshi actually joined just around the time I saw, no, no, but I know Paresh Soshi by some other route, etc. And he came close to mine. I could not interact with him. I have known him for long, otherwise, etc. He has always been very kind and courteous whenever I come here. So thank you Vahia again. Thank you Aniket. Thank you Paresh for this. Now while I am on HBCSE, I must acknowledge the help of some younger friends. I talked of my academic colleagues. There are too many of them and they all came spontaneously here to stand with me. Meena, who is, whom I should call my young friend for a long time. And Lale Deshmukh of Integrated Lab, we have been together. Shirish is always there. I want to also name Indrani. She's a soft-spoken person. Oh, she's there, yeah. She never, she is very self-effacing. She does all the work, but she keeps behind. She is a wonderful resource for chemistry Olympiad. And was also a ready help for me. When I was in, used to sit in the, this post-retirement, I was working with Savita sometime. So it was Savit, Indrani who helped me tremendously. Anupama is there? Well, I don't know if she's there. Anupama? Oh, you are there. Good, good. And many other people, please forgive me. I, the younger, the more recent ones who, who came after retirement. I know them, but I don't remember their names, etc. And Shvetah, Shvetah, yeah. I have known her for a long time. She is excellent in maths, etc. I had been wanting, I mean, she impressed some maths faculty when they came here. So very well-known mathematics educators. She went there and I have been associated with her a long time. And finally, Manoj. Who is Manoj? Oh, yeah, he did. So Manoj, he's an amazing person. It's difficult to describe who, what is. So I won't, he's an amazing artist, amazingly creative. Lot of creativity that you see in HBCSE, various things, it is, it's Manoj, etc. And very, very, very nice, nice man, just, just to be there. I would also like to, there are some behind-the-sign scenes people who have helped me all my life. In fact, without that, nothing would have happened. I talked about N I U's proposal, but that would have been only on my papers. But there had to be some people to help me and etc. And the person who has been my help throughout, after the, from 1994, after retirement, not only retirement, after that, I take her for granted. There is some work, I just call her and say, Somana, you do this and Somana, you do that. So Somana has been my most closest confidant, you can, you can say. And I, and I tell her just about everything. This, this one person, apart from my children that I take for granted, is Somana. And Gajanan is a universal, useful person, not only for my, but he's always there when I have this. Smitha, she has now retired, but I think. Sandhya Pednekar, they are my very, very good. Even now I make use of them. When I go to the library, I'm very lazy looking for books. I have to just tell Sandhya or Pednekar, I need this book. And they just get me in, in two minutes, etc. So thank you all very much. I might have missed some, many important names. Please forgive me, etc. Now I should mention, Gagan Gupta is there. Please forgive me for five, ten, five minutes, just says another, a few lines. I enjoyed tremendous rapport with N C R T people. To, to, so much so that I was, I have now been put in a committee, which I should not have been put, I'm just too old for such heavy work that's now going to come to HBCSE. But I, God knows what, some of this, I think the culprits must have been some of these N C R T friends who, who must have recommended my name there. And so anyway, twenty years ago, we had a very, very nice friendship with B K Sharma, V P Shri Vast, Gagan Gupta, Hukum Singh. All very dear to me. And I very, very much cherish my visits to N C R T. Actually, N C R T, apart from, of course, these book visits and great things. You see, Delhi is a place, I grew up in Delhi, as you heard. I always miss some of its snacks. I, you see Mumbai snacks are no match for. So whenever I went there, I used to do the pharmaish kebe mujhe bread pakoda. Bread pakoda is a dish there. Bread pakoda chahiye mujhe. So these people would from somewhere get such tasty bread pakoda. And once they knew that Arun Kumar likes it, every meeting that I, that bread pakoda would be there. So, and various things. And they know that I have, you know, I have taste for especially food from Delhi. Delhi food is fantastic. And I keep teasing my Mumbai friends that you, you guys don't know how to, how to prepare food. And so still I, I enjoy it, but now, now it's too late for me to enjoy a bread pakoda and all that. Numerous people at A E S, Anushakti Nagar, Nehru Science Center, Mumbai, Marathi Vidnayan Parishad, many other organizations. I will not name numerous friends, the time is getting late. But I would like to thank Sri Epi Deshpande, is he still there? Epi Deshpande, for inviting me to be the president of Akhil Bhartiya, Marathi Adiveshan at Wani, etc. It was wonderful. And all these people, particularly my HBCSE colleagues. You see, till, till, although my mother tongue is Marathi, I, my preferred, preferred language is always Hindi. But it is these guys who introduced me, Agartha, Gambhir, etc. So that now I am reasonably good in my own mother tongue. Though nowhere compared to Professor Pradhana or somebody else, but still I can manage. So I am very thankful to all them. I want to thank Pratibha Jali. I met her two decades ago. And since then, she has been an important resource person for physics education research. Whenever I, I have some query about this, as to who is the right person for this or who is the, I, she is there, she has international, she was, she was Chair I C P 2005. And she very kindly agreed to contribute to physics education, that special news, which are very nice thing. And from, I, I think I C P 2005, yeah. I C P, she organized so nicely in Delhi. It was, it was a real model of how nicely an international conference can be done. And I hope, I A P T and other people are organizing at Chandigarh now. I hope it's, it meets the same standards as what she did in I C P 2000. And I gave a talk there, etc., etc. So I have very good memories of Pratibha Jali. As for the physics news issue is concerned, Professor Alu Alia, Professor Sapna Sharma, thank you very much for all your help, etc. I am now coming near the end, but I cannot leave my, you must have noticed that the most important part of my life I have missed and that is my students. But they are so numerous, so how can I name so many of them? There are hundreds and I don't know how many of them. So I will only end by naming my PhD students of some of whom who. So my PhD supervision has, is very peculiar. I mean, I don't think there's any, there must be a few parallels. What I do is, some student comes along and says, he or she is interested in this topic. What I do is some student comes along and says he or she is interested in this topic. I was in particle physics but I say, "Okay, you are interested, let's do this." And then I start working with the student and learning that subject and doing PhD thing. Next student comes, "No, no, I am not interested in that, I am interested in this." "Okay, why not?" So I go to that subject. This is, this is the way, it's a very peculiar way. Not if you are wanting to become great professional physicists, don't adopt this pattern. But I think for a physics teacher, I was destined to be a education, so-called educational, but physics teacher. This is a good thing because then you get to know various subjects and your epistemology is never clear unless you do some research. No matter, the research may not be earth-shaking but the fact that you are doing research improves your epistemic understanding of physics etcetera. So that is, so this pattern was suited me. It will not suit an aspiring physicist who wants to become a great professional physicist. But for physics education, it is good. So one day, you know, when I was in 1970s, Bala Yar came and he said from BSc days he is interested in general relativity. I mean those days general relativity was not, it was regarded as an acertocratic subject. This current general relativity and particle physics convergence that had not arrived in that day. It was not something particle physicists knew actually. I am talking of nineteen, early 1970s. He said, "No, from BSc I am interested." I said, "Why not? Let's go." And he related to you, so I won't repeat. We read those books which were meant for general relativity. It was a very productive collaboration. It was very, it was an exhilarating experience to have worked on quantum black hole physics originally coming from particle physics background. Next, next year Lady came and she said, "No, no, I am, this general relativity is too much for me. I am more into arduous subjects like optics or atomic physics." I said, "Why not? Let's go to there." So I did atomic physics, optical physics, a subject called coherent transience. And it was, it was just learning together something and producing some research and such as. I joined Homi Baba Centre, there was a student, has Manju Shah come today? Manju Shah Deshpande, she was, she was going to come. Anyway, she was a bit mathematically oriented student and at Homi Baba Centre, what will I do? At, I was yearning to do some maths and you know, some kind of theoretical thing. So in disguise of theoretical physics, I actually do, did mathematical modeling of educational processes. Which was, I mean what is theoretical physics, applying mathematics to some system? This was applying mathematics to an educational system. So we made this, that also was a productive collaboration in some journals called Journal of Mathematical Sociology. So it's all very strange, you know, some particle physicists publishing in Journal of Mathematical Sociology and so on. But I, this is because of this pattern of this. Anyway, Jayashri taught me this PR etcetera. Meanwhile, I never kept out of interest with, touch with physics. And there was this friend Sudhir Panse. He had some new ideas on thermodynamics of partially coincident cycles etcetera. And he came to me, he had lot of friendship and respect for me and said, "Shall we think about it?" I said, "Yeah, you can, you think about it, I will be engaged with you." So basically he was not my student but he, I was quite deeply engaged with him when he did his PhD on a very original topic etcetera. Then after some time, there was a young boy called Vikram Artle. He was into this quantum foundation, he was obsessed with quantum foundation. I said, "Don't get obsessed with quantum, do something useful." I mean quantum foundation is not an area and not certainly for me doing here now directorship of this centre. But no, then I cooked, you know, I and he formulated a subject which is not foundation but it had to do with foundation, the decoherence theory. So you know this quantum, the phenomena that classical quantum systems, how do they become classical? The emergence of classicality in quantum systems. This topic always fascinated me because this is a paradox. QM suddenly, I mean why does classical physics work, okay, quantum is this and quantum physics should work even for macrobodies? Why doesn't, why all the, decoherence theory is a satisfactory non-philosophical theory. Other things are too philosophical or God knows what they are and I never got into that. So decoherence theory, I said, "Well, you did it." People had done other things, I said, "Let's go to molecular chemistry." I mean molecules actually. So we went to molecules and did some decoherence, produced paper in Journal of Chemical, what is that journal called, the equivalent of Journal of Chemical Physics. Yeah, Journal of Chemical Physics is the right, yeah. So I reproduced three papers in Journal of Chemical Physics because yeah, it was on molecular decoherence etcetera. Anyway, then I was back to this and I was more into this alternative conceptions etcetera, etcetera. I finally took a student who was in proper physics education research but I took an extremely difficult topic. PR never does such difficult topics. Physics education research generally restricts to some simpler topics of BSc etcetera. But I was, by the way, I had got converted to GIA, general relativity. So I said, "Student conceptions in general relativity, let's formulate it." Again, it was a difficult topic. I was not sure it will work but it worked and the student got PhD etcetera. So this has been my, this thing. I mean incidentally Panse, Pradhana, Rajwade and I, apart from our academic interaction, we form another circle and we meet every three, four months or the, we used to, now it's stopped because of the pandemic. We would go to restaurant, they would come every month and we would discuss everything under the sun except physics there. So we would be discussing all kinds of politics and whatever is going on in the world etcetera. So I think it has, that was a wonderful interaction, this. Among the study circle students, I'll name a few. Nanal Digi Prabhu, has he come? Sahana Murthy, Sahana Murthy probably is not come, she gave a lecture here. I want to also mention Shekhar Devdhar. He was going to come but he did not, his college meeting stuck him. So I still recall Nanal in the study circles. She was, at that time, she looked like, even now she looks but she looked like a young collegiate girl, sitting quietly at just one, one place. She was, she was always there at one place and coming with unfailing regularity. It was not that one day you come, no, all years she came with failing regularity. And now she has been doing extremely well and she is in TIFR and so on. So I am very proud of her that some of my study circles. And I am very proud that some of my study circle students are doing extremely well in physics etcetera, etcetera. Prabhu has been a very dear friend. I didn't, I didn't see him, I thought he would come etcetera. I would also like to mention my friendship with BM Arora. I have not had direct interaction but Arora has had lot of, lot of interest in education and in that context we came quite a lot. So Professor Arora, thank you, thank you very much. And please forgive me any other omission that I have this thing. I close this now with four names, so-called my, not my students but my younger colleagues. Savita Ladke, with whom I did chemistry education, produced a book on chemical thermodynamics. And my more recent colleagues, Anvesh, Mashud and Amog. Amog is not in HBCSE, he is in Kansas State etcetera, but he was here sometime etcetera, etcetera. And I not only enjoyed the discussions with, but I also enjoy the tremendous respect they gave me as a, because of difference of age now etcetera. So I am, I am really fine when I come to, come to HBCSE. These younger friends of mine are there to take care of me etcetera. But however, it has not been just respect and etcetera. Last ten years have been very, very productive with Savita on this book and last several years, six, seven years, we have been doing this physics epistemology etcetera. It has been, I would say quite a creative phase of my life, so much near the end in which we have done this epistemology, physics etcetera and produced some nice papers. I think they are worth reading for many, many science educations, the students of HBCSE, they are, yeah. Now, this was all about friendships later but there are some people who you meet, some friends who you come across at a younger stage when you are college etcetera. When you are more here, interest is more playful and fun rather than studies or anything like that. Although we were studious students even in colleges etcetera. Vinod, Sani, my old Hansaraj College buddy. Kailash Rastaghi, my, a little later, my early TIFR friend, Deepan etcetera. The other day I, we met at, there was some function, just one or two weeks ago, yeah. So we met at TIFR. It must have been after, I, God knows, with Kailash probably fifteen, twenty years. Vinod also after fifteen years. It just doesn't feel that we, it has been so much a period. It's as if we just met yesterday. So that is the great thing with these early friendships. The bonds are so strong that no matter how much is the time, the relationships remain the same. There is no formality. I don't care one bit that they have become very distinguished people in their own fields etcetera. Nothing, it doesn't matter to me at all. For me, it's Kailash and Vinod of the same old years and I have the same affection for them, independent of what they did later in their lives etcetera. So that is really all I, I would like to close. I have talked about everybody. It's not my usual habit as HBCSE people know to keep, to bring in my own family matters in this thing. I usually keep them away etcetera. But I think this is eighty decades and probably I am never going to come, never going to come to this stage again. Here, probably my last chance. So I would like to also acknowledge those whom I have always taken for granted. Varsha, my daughter here and Jeetain, her husband and my son Neeraj whom Nanal mentioned, who unfortunately he might be, I don't know, is it a way to see? But he might be, he might be there watching, Aika? He is there and his wife Jen, they must have got up early and got this. And of course, Varsha, Neeraj, mother Shobha, who gave me these wonderful two children. So I would like to acknowledge them. They have provided me the solid, stable, emotionally fulfilling life without which nothing, nothing would have been possible. Thank you very much. Yeah, thank you.